Thank you. Dana, I want to like to welcome you all to this regularly scheduled meeting for the Planning Commission for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. I'd like to open the meeting at 7:30, and may we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Hera?
Here.
Mr. Cussera?
Here.
Mr. Nushai? Ms. Redman?
Here.
Mr. Solomon?
Here.
Mr. Tinlin?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any problems with tonight's agenda as it stands? Seeing none, I will then approve it as is. And we'll go on to number five, which is approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 22. That'll be our last meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 22nd, 2025.
Support.
Motion, support. Everybody happy with it? No changes? Can I have a roll call on that, please?
Mr. Hera?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number six is public discussion. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to opine on any subject? We'll give you some time at the microphone if you'd like to. But nobody seems to be running for it, so I will then close public discussion and we'll move right along to number seven. Consideration of the special land use application for 1523 to 1537 North Main Street, which is Hamilton Animal Hospital.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. Happy to just give a quick rundown of this case for the animal hospital. So, the case is a special land use. That's why they're... That and the fact that they're expanding into the second building are the reasons they're here tonight. They are not proposing any site work. They've provided a detailed land survey that documents parking setbacks, property size, you know, all of that. So, really, the... Covering some of the site details, I'll just run through them real quick. Really, the second... So, they're pretty much doubling in size. They occupy the north suite right now. They're snagging the south suite to take control of the entire building for the one use, the animal hospital use. All the parking's in the rear. There are 20 spaces provided, and that does exceed the minimum parking requirement of 11 spaces. One question, I think, for the applicant that is pertinent here is the fact that they don't have a dumpster enclosure right now. I think it's a good question to ask how they are currently handling. Is there increase in waste? You know, how are they going to deal with this? So, that's a good question for the applicant when they are up to speak. Screening, they do have a wall. There is no green belt, but that's an existing nonconformity with the site being rather built out with pavement really all the way to the property line in the rear. There's not a lot of landscaping. There is a lawn area at the north end for some green space. No change to the building's footprint, to the materials, any of that. Signs will be applied for under a new application. There is no proposal to change the lighting. They're all building-mounted. There's sidewalks and there's pedestrian access. Accesses from North Main on two driveways. Another thing I wanted to point out is the fact that the applicant is applying for a variance that would take place post-approval if you wish to give a site plan approval, and you could condition the approval on the granting of the variance. That's for the 100-foot distance from the residential boundary requirement. That's a standard in Section 4.29. So, obviously, 100 feet from that property is really going to be difficult with the shallowness of the blocks there and the building's existing build-out, so...
Do we know what the distance is now?
Let me look at the survey. That's a good question.
I've got an aerial view, but there's no dimensions on it.
Looks like it's about 80.5 feet.
Eighty?
Yep. So, that was honestly mostly it. Engineering review was waived, and DVW, police and fire have indicated the plan as presented is acceptable. So, we included the standards for special use approval in the staff report. Obviously, to approve it, you need to find that those are generally met. If you do not wish to approve it, you should... You shall cite any of those findings on why it's not met, so...
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yep.
Yeah, so, just kind of related. So, the residential area is what's on the west side behind them essentially.
Yeah.
And it looks like the current footprint is already, you know, less than 100, which is the 100 feet, which is the requirement. So, they already technically have a variance. Is that correct?
Well, it's probably just a nonconformity.
Or nonconformity, yeah.
So, it's a nonconformity, but the fact that they are expanding their building, I guess, buildings occupancy into another suite, we just ruled that it's a... They're expanding their nonconformity essentially is what they're doing, which prompts the need for a variance.
Yeah.
Usually, nonconformities can maintain or decrease in intensity. They just can't expand, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
Have the neighbors there, the homes behind it, have they been notified of this?
It's a new... Yep.
Happened? They have, okay.
Yes, and I'd say they would technically have been notified twice because of the last meeting that wasn't had. So, yes, and both the signs have been posted there. We already do have the variance one up as well, just for continuity to move stuff forward, conditional on the approval. But yes, neighbors have been notified twice. We haven't had any feedback from them.
Okay, very good.
That's helpful.
Any further questions for Andy?
Yeah, well, I'll ask a couple questions in terms of the sign ordinance. Why is that something that we're not seeing here?
I might defer to Nick to that, but I think generally because signs have their own permitting process, we generally deferred that to the just administrative permitting process through the building department.
I guess, I feel like that's a kind of point of contention, maybe. We've been told that it, you know, it's kind of been presented before, and this isn't directed necessarily at you, Andy. But we've been told in the past before, like, oh, they're just working on it, and it kind of seems like it's a pattern now to where that we're not looking at any sign approvals, which is a little concerning, and maybe that's a conversation we can have outside of this. But I do see it still within our scope and approval. The alley just south, it says that they are going to be using that as an entry-exit. Are they planning on having a one-way entrance and one-way exit around the building to where there's staggering parking and, you know?
That's a good question for the applicant. I don't know if they're proposing any kind of one-way directional flow right now.
Part of their actual lot. It's not in, you know, an easement or it's...
I don't know if there's an easement recorded that shares the property yet, but obviously, your question's relevant because they technically only have, what, 8.5 feet of that lot? They have all the access they need on the north side, but if they do want to use the south side, it's a good question.
Yeah, okay. And I also do a drive-by there. Their parking lot looks great. The building that they're looking to occupy looks like it... The parking lot's not in the best condition. I know this is also the opportunity for us to try to bring things as much into compliance as possible. Maybe the applicant can speak to whether or not they plan on, you know, matching their... It looked like their lot was like a blacktop and the other one was not. Maybe they're looking to bring that over, so...
That's a good question for the applicant. About the signs, though, I suppose I should probably answer your question.
Sure.
If there are, I mean, obviously, it's a special land use. If you have imminent concerns about something like visibility impairment or anything like that, you definitely have the power to condition aspects of this approval on, you know, the sign be trimmed down or be shrunk or be altered. But if you don't, I mean, I would tie it to some sort of health and safety.
Well, we do have a sign ordinance.
Yeah, and you do have a sign ordinance, but...
And I don't know if they're looking to change their sign or not. Again, maybe a question for the applicant. I see she's... I'm assuming that's the applicant that's making eye contact. Maybe it's okay if she just comes up?
Yeah, yeah, but in the event that, let's say, a sign was even permitted by the code, but you had some issues with the, you know, the way it's situated or whatnot, you could act on conditioning something related to shrinking the sign or changing its location. I would just tie that to the health and, you know, some sort of health and safety threat to the public.
Okay, right, visibility or some...
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we don't know yet if they're proposing a new sign.
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the signage used to be on our... Part of our agenda that we looked at, and it's slowly being taken away from us that... And I assume administrations know what the ordinances are, what the rules are, and I'm assuming that they're covering that for it. So, in a way, we can allow them to do it, but if there's a sign that's questionable, like he said, if it bothers some sign... But the problem with that is we don't really know it. We don't see the sign.
We don't see them.
I was wondering about an existing one that is causing issues that you wanted to clean up.
Yeah, unless we drive by the site after the fact, the sign, new signs up, and then we see something, you know, but...
Yeah, so, signage falls under administrative review on minor facade changes for replacement of existing signage and installation of new signage, removal of nonconforming signage. And it's been like that for as much as I can remember being in Claussen.
Well, we typically reviewed them, at least as far as I knew, as part of our site plan review.
That along with the murals in town, yeah?
Yeah, the murals, it has... Murals have their own standards, but signage is done administratively.
Okay, maybe we can review that at a future meeting.
Yeah, we can. I just can't remember a time when it was... It might have been discussed, but not an approval item by the PSC.
Oh, we went to quite a bit of times with sign, maybe not the last two years or so, but...
Certainly not in the last three.
We got problems with like Taco Bell. They got their name on the sign, and they also have a picture of a taco. Is that allowed? Is that not allowed?
We reviewed those, yeah.
Yeah, and I couldn't remember that. I know sign variances go to the ZBA.
Yeah.
So, I know Evan can attest to that one.
Yeah, we should probably delve into that some point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to try and shed some light on that.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, would they like to perhaps answer some questions for us?
Hi.
Evening.
My name is Beth Williams, Innovative Construction Systems. I'm the one that's been doing most of the designing and working with the client on updating any space plan, et cetera. But in regards to the sign, which I know that, you know, Erin had commented is a major issue, in regards to the sign, we weren't really planning on redoing the sign anyway. It's, to be totally honest with you, it's almost a staple in the community that everybody knows that sign, and so, we really didn't want to update the sign at all. In regards to the parking, the parking lot on both sides, if I am correct, I believe this is Deanna Newland, she's actually the veterinary doctor there. I believe the parking there on both sides is actually asphalt. There may be some cracks and that type of thing, which we would have no problem looking into doing some filling and maybe doing a seal coating on it to make it look a little better, re-stripe it, that type of thing. We weren't really planning on at this point. We weren't planning on redoing the entire parking lot. Again, you know, we're mainly looking at doing an interior remodel versus exterior. I know there was a question on trash, and that question I can't really answer, Deanna. She does have bins at the back of her building with lids on them, very, very clean, which is something I was surprised at, but very clean, and she does take them to the street now, correct?
Yes, we have two of the large recycling bins that we recycle everything, which actually, surprisingly, we don't go through that much with distributors now. They actually don't even use cardboard anymore. It's reusable boxes that are plastic. So, we actually don't have that much, surprisingly. So, we have two that we fill out, and I put it to the city garbage every Wednesday morning real early. And then also, right now, we just have four garbage bins that we usually use. Really, about three of them get full, but we just keep four, and I take those out every morning on Wednesdays and, of course, bring them back in whenever we see that it's been picked up.
That one's going to be a problem.
Did you... Could you speak to how you plan on using that alley? Is it going to... Are you going to have like a one-way in and a one-way out? Is that the concept that you're going for?
I wasn't planning on it. I was going to keep it still everything the way that it is. So, currently, of course, in our main building that we're currently in, there is kind of two ways, you know, people can get in and out. It is a little bit tighter, but people do that now. Currently, we're actually using that extra space where the alley is for staff for parking, and that's where we are parking. So, mainly, it's only staff that go through there. Honestly, most people don't even realize that you can drive through and drive around to use that. So, clients really never use that at all. It's really only staff that does. So, of course, I wasn't going to make it so you go in one way and leave out the other, but we certainly can if needed, but I don't...
No, it's not a requirement. I was curious, and when you say the staff, they drive into there and then park in that back? Parking or they park in the alley?
They park in that back.
In the back.
Because I'm assuming, of course, you know, for the alley, just mean that little driveway kind of between the two buildings. Yeah, we just exit out of there a lot of times because, you know, we're just parked there. So, a lot of people exit out that way, but...
It's not something that you're looking to use all the time with the expansion of your business, then?
Correct.
Okay. That was all the questions.
Further questions?
So, sorry to be nitpicky about the signs, but... So, the two businesses that are currently occupying them have their own unique signs. So, is the plan definitely to take those down?
Yes.
Okay. And what will be the primary entrance for the...
It'll be the exact same as it is currently.
On the side, off the parking lot?
It'll be on the north side.
So, those doors are not going to...
They're not going to be used or needed, no.
But you're not altering them?
But we are looking at the fire code as in the egress, and we will have a fire drawing already put together. That's one of the reasons why I was... I would comment on that back alleyway. It is very easy for the trucks to get in and pull around and come out, and it is accessible. It's not something that's parked in, because that would probably be hard for a fire truck to get in or an emergency situation get in, but it's nice that they have the turnaround rather than happen to do an in-and-out.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
You do not meet the minimum 100-foot setback. You're aware of that. Does that mean you're going in front of the ZBA to get that variance?
Yes.
You're aware of that?
We've already applied for that, yes.
So, we can do our thing?
Provided you're okay with this.
We can do our thing here, and then you have to still go to them to get that, okay?
Yep.
Any further questions?
Yeah, actually, like, like usual, you sparked a thought in my head with your question. With, I believe there's awnings. I was going to try to pull up a picture next door. What... You're going to take those down and then just kind of seal that up there? Or were you planning on putting any type of awning over that?
We were looking at what is there currently, and truly, I was going to kind of bring it up to planning and ZBA possibly later if we decide to just take them down. I know we could always paint them. We could always put a new shingle on them, that type of thing. Personally, I think an awning would look better. One of the issues is obviously price, and I wanted to kind of talk to Deanna about that, because taking that down, we also then have roof repairs that need to be done, gutter repairs that need to be changed, so on and so forth. So, cost-wise, it might be something where maybe we just paint it or we do some new shingles on it currently. But, you know, that might be another option, looking at maybe doing an awning.
Okay.
We really haven't addressed that at this point.
So, you're saying you have a hard top, it's roof?
It's a black roof, yes.
Okay.
That's just a mansored roof that sticks out in the front?
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, he was bringing a picture. I was imagining something different in my head. So, when those signs come down, you know, you'll just be able to repair. You're just taking those down completely?
Correct.
Right? They won't... You're not going to paint those, though?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, cool. I wasn't so worried about the overhang part there. It was more the sign awning. Yeah, because some awnings, I was imagining it was an awning sign. So, I apologize. Thank you for that.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain the motion.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the special land use for 1523 through 1537 North Main Hamilton Animal Hospital with the condition of the approval of the variance and the approval of the signs.
Support.
Motion, support. Anybody happy with the motion? Anybody want to change or add anything?
I did want to bring up a point of discussion. Is any... I don't know if anybody else drove and was feeling... They said that they would be okay with doing the ceiling and the striping and the... But it doesn't sound like many... I don't know if you've... You're expanding because you have so many people that your parking lot's full, and you feel like that parking lot will be used or not. But are we feeling like we should try to bring that parking lot at least as up into compliance as possible? That's, you know, kind of... Because I would be in favor of maybe doing a seal in a... Yeah, in a coat over top of it and adding some stripes just to bring it into uniform compliance, because the animal hospital parking lot looks great. It'd be great to bring that up to that standard.
At least make them look like they're cohesive unit as opposed to two separate.
Yeah, and it needs a little love, right?
Yes, a little TLC.
Yeah.
You take such wonderful care. The landscaping is beautiful also. I mean, it's definitely a benefit to the community, but I agree with Commissioner Redmond. It would be nice to take this opportunity to just... I don't want to say force you to do it, but encourage you to do this stuff that's just not convenient to do unless you kind of have to, and keeping that in tip-top shape would be excellent.
Yeah, yeah.
I had every intention of doing that at some point to... I wasn't going to completely retop because I had to... For the animal hospital currently, it was very bad shape. So, I actually did all of that already, and I did have everything, of course, with the striping was just on, I don't know, probably about two years ago. But I do know, of course, with the other side, that we were going to try to actually kind of patch up and make it look nicer versus doing the whole thing from start to finish like I did already at the other building. But I mean, we can do whatever we need to do. But I do know it needs to be fixed. You know, it is in imperfect condition for sure, so...
Yeah, and I think that typically the ideal of like doing that ceiling and the coating over top is to...
Ceiling coating and putting new stripings.
Yeah, it would add to the longevity and get you a few years.
For a point of just process, right? Like, because I think this is a good discussion, but I think there's... We have to make two motions, right? Special land use needs to be approved, and then we'll talk about the site plan next, which I think this falls under. So, as you think about adjusting your original motion?
I would...
That could probably move on over. And maybe Nick, that's what you want to comment on?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
But thanks for the discussion.
Yeah, no, fair. That's a good point. That's more appropriate.
We did jump over a very critical step for special land use, so a public hearing does need to be opened before the motion. So, you're going to need to table the motion, open the public hearing, and close it. I know there's tons of people here to talk about it, but procedurally, we need to do that, so...
Okay.
Table your motion.
I will motion to table my motion.
I will open for public discussion if anyone from the public wishes to opine on this. And seeing none, I will close public and go for a motion again.
You want me to restate everything? All right, I'll... This time, Josh, I'm going to leave all the conditions out, and we'll bring those to the site plan. I approve... I moved to approve the special land use for 1523 through 1537 North Main Animal Hospital as presented pending site plan approval.
Support.
Motion, support. Anybody happy with it? Can I have a roll call, please?
All right, and so that support was Tinlin that time, okay. All right, Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mr. Hera?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Claussen.
Thank you.
And we will move on to agenda item number eight, which is consideration of the site plan application for 1523 to 1537 North Main Street, Hamilton Animal Hospital.
Yeah, but isn't... We did the special land use.
We did that special land use.
We did special land use.
We kind of just did discussion on both topics.
Yeah, I think we covered that pretty well.
Yeah, so just the motion.
So, you guys are okay with me making a motion? Okay. I moved to approve the site plan for 1523 through 1537 North Main Hamilton Animal Hospital with the following conditions. The approval of a variance... Oh, no, we approve it with the variance. They don't have to go to get the variance.
Yeah, we're not going to.
They...
Contingent on the variance.
Okay, sorry. Contingent upon the variance. They seal and recoat, stripe that gained parking lot in the back, and the sign ordinance is followed and approved through Edmund.
Support.
Motion, support. Anybody happy with it? Can I have a roll call on this one, please?
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hera?
Yes.
And Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to Claussen again. Now, we move on to number nine, which is consideration of the special land use application for 1339 West 14 Mile, which is Paul's Auto Wash.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks, Andy, for handling that first case there. I was at another Planning Commission meeting before this, so...
You're warmed up.
Going for two tonight. So, yes, we are looking at 1339 West 14 Mile. This is Paul's Auto Wash. It's been there for quite a long time. And what they are doing is making a few exterior modifications to this existing car wash. They are mostly related to the... Well, actually, they're all related to the vacuums, but the vacuums are a portion of it, and some shifting of some maneuvering lanes is the rest of it. So, this is a .673-acre site on the south side of West 14 Mile, right near the intersection with Coolidge, although there is one parcel between this and Coolidge, zoned West Gate, and it does have that tunnel car wash on it. There are multiple queuing lanes and some vacuums along the side of the building, and then there's also some across the queuing lanes. So, what they do right now with the vacuums is they parallel park between those vacuum units, and they use them, and then they take the maneuvering lanes through the car wash tunnel and then back off the site out of the tunnel. And what they're proposing to do is they're proposing to move all the vacuums to the building side of the lanes. Instead of parallel spaces, they would have 90-degree spaces for each of those vacuum units and the seven total. And then the lanes shift over to where the vacuums that were across the lanes used to be. And then you maneuver kind of by a little lane shift to get back to the part of the lane that's not being modified. So, modifications to this use do require special land use approval, and that is specifically because it is a nonconforming use in the West Gate District. This is not a listed use there. So, any modification to it, per these standards that we have in our nonconformity section of our ordinance, does require a special land use approval. And we're looking to make sure that the expansion and alteration is necessary to incorporate, you know, technology that is essential for the continuation of the principal use and that the expansion and alteration won't increase or add additional negative impacts on adjacent properties. The adjacent properties are entirely zoned West Gate. The adjacent properties are entirely zoned West Gate. They're entirely developed with commercial uses except for that old Happy's Pizza site, which is currently vacant. The applicants proposing, well, I already talked about what they're proposing, so I'll skip that one. The dimensional requirements, we did look at those. This is, of course, an existing building and no alterations to the building are proposed. We didn't have a building height, but it's conforming with the height. It's just, I don't know exactly how conforming. The front setback is about nine feet. It would typically have to be ten feet, but again, it's an existing building. And then there are no required side and rear setbacks in this district. They're at three-point-three, forty-eight, and seventy-eight feet respectively. The off-street parking is not affected by this proposal. These spaces for the vacuum hoses are kind of extra wide so that there's plenty of room to maneuver around with big hoses and other things that you're sticking in and out of your car. And also so that you can have your doors fully wide open in the space and not having them obstruct what you're trying to do. The dumpster enclosure is compliant. So, there's, sidewalk connections are required for all uses where they're feasible. The site essentially has this connection because the sidewalk is right there in front of the building. There's not really anywhere to go from the sidewalk because you're probably not going to use the vacuums if you're not in a car. And there's actually nowhere to enter the building for the public, but the sidewalk is there. The property is not adjacent to residential uses, so the screening requirements to residential wouldn't apply here. There's really no landscaping on the site at present. It's pretty much a paved-out site. Building is existing with no proposed changes to the building. Signage is always handled under a separate application. They're not proposing to change any signage at this point. They're not proposing to change the lighting on the site. Accesses from Fourteen Mile and that will remain. And we didn't hear any concerns from DPW Police or Fire. So, it's a fairly simple plan to replace some vacuum units and shift some lanes essentially. But it does require that special land use approval along with it, site plan approval for the particulars of the changes. So, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. If you look at the end of the letter, you can see the standards for granting special use approval as well.
Now that you're answering questions and not Nick, we'll go back on signage. And here it says signage is handled under a separate application. I believe the sign that's there is a pole-mounted sign.
That's correct. It's a non-conforming sign.
And now that we're doing a site plan, is now not the time to remove that? Move it on to a monument sign, I believe. That was my understanding, was that, you know, it was somewhat grandfathered in. But anytime you do a site plan like this, I think it activates that, that we want to be compliant.
I am going to look at some language here just to make sure that I'm giving you the correct, precise response to that. There is a provision in the sign ordinance, section thirty-six-seven A three, that does require signs to be brought into compliance at the time of site plan approval. So, let me see if I can get an image of that sign. Well, I'm not logged into the meeting. But you're correct. There's a pole sign there and it would be non-conforming. Whether or not they actually have a place on the site to put a monument sign, I think is a real question, which of course would be a question for the zoning board of appeals ultimately, if you were-
Or signage on the building itself, but not on a pole.
There is some signage on the building itself at the moment.
Joe, do we also have a, like a historical preservation? This seems like a sign, I don't know how old this building is, but it's-
It's been there for a long time, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of has that retro look to it. So, I don't know if it-
Grandfathering pole signs, huh?
There, we do have a, that's what we implemented with the chicken. And I know that when Gill's Collision was coming, we talked about that, the historical importance of that sign or, you know. I don't know if, how that approval goes and how we look at that as opposed to weighing those options.
I mean, we fought the one at the auto parts place across the street there.
Which one? Well, they, I mean, I don't think you can consider that necessarily historical. Are you talking like Pep Boys or something?
It was, I can't recall the name of it. Renner's wouldn't know because we had a court case with them, right? Pep Boys, they won, right?
So, that's the, I mean, that's essentially the only issue that I'm really seeing here is that they do have a non-conforming sign and our ordinance does call for them to bring that into compliance at a site plan. It's definitely over eight feet tall, which is our height limit. So, I mean, really, what you have there is two pathways. There's the replace it and then there's the get a variance to keep it up pathway. Either way, you would become compliance with the ordinance either via a variance or via replacing your sign. So, if you wanted a condition of approval, what you could do would be to say the sign shall be brought into compliance and which path they take to that compliance, the ZBA or an actual new sign, is up to them.
So, I'm wondering more in general, how does the historical sign preservation play into that? Because the ZBA doesn't consider those things. I thought that was something that they'd have to come to us too, so the process of that.
Yeah, we do have a landmark sign. So. So, landmark signs, what is that, section thirty-six-five B eight of the sign ordinance. So, landmark signs, subject to site plan review and approval by the planning commission in accordance with the standards for site plan review, may also be approved as part of a larger site plan. Let's see. They can be approved in this location. You have some findings that you would have to make. The sign shall not be injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare. The location and scale of the sign will be compatible with adjacent uses and the sign is designed to be durable. An acceptable plan for its maintenance has been submitted to the city. And then you would have to make an affirmative finding on one of the two criteria. The sign preserves, revives, or restores a documented historical element of the site or the sign enhances the municipal identity of the city of Claussen or provides a gateway feature for the city or its downtown. The second one would not apply here. It's obviously a sign for private business and not welcoming you to the city. But you'd be able to have a discussion on one, I believe. And then you may place conditions on that approval, of course, that you find to be consistent with the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the city, its residents, and visitors. So, you do have that as well, which is something that you could discuss.
But since we don't know necessarily, wouldn't that be a decision that the applicant would like to make if they would like to? So, is it something we should pause on the approval of the site plan?
We'd want to hear from them as to what their opinion on the whole thing is. Let's talk to them and see kind of what they say and we can kind of maybe figure out what we want to do from there.
No other questions for Joe? Would the applicant like to come to my-?
My name is Al Gilrech and owner of Paul's Auto Wash. In regards to the sign, I did some work back in two thousand sixteen and I know the city of Claussen was threatening to take it down. And I hired an attorney to try to keep it and ten thousand dollars later, it's still there. So, I don't know. Do I have, I mean, do I do any more site improvements like this to keep up and clean, you know, as far as the asphalt? But that's, so that's where I'm at right now. And then we, at that time too, we even looked at putting a sign like you have that you need. And when you pull out of there, unfortunately, the way it was designed back in nineteen sixty-seven, the, it's hard, you can't see. And you also have people, they actually, when they redid the Fourteen Mile back in, let's see, two thousand nine, they took more of our, they put a deceleration line to get into the Rite Aid. So, that even affected us with people leaving and seeing because there's people on the sidewalk. So, I mean, that's what I know about the sign and what we've done in the past. And that was probably all, it's all documented in two thousand sixteen. I mean, so.
So, would you prefer, did you hear our discussion and did you have a preference on if you have a pathway by variance or by submitting a new site plan or discussing with Nick or the historical path? Is it, so it does sound like a sign that you're looking to keep?
Definitely, most definitely.
I see online what you mean. It doesn't seem like you have enough storefront, for lack of better words, to place a sign before you're in the right-of-way of the sidewalk and the road. I do think it would be a hazard. So, you know, there's a few different pathways that we discussed. Did you guys have a preference on one? Because I don't feel necessarily comfortable making that decision for you.
I mean, you're telling me that I can't do this construction this year if I have to fight out to keep the sign? I mean.
And maybe Greg and Nick might be the better ones to answer this, but from my understanding, we are supposed to bring your sign into compliance when we're approving a site plan. And that can happen in a couple of different ways. You can ask for a variance from the zoning board of appeals. You can discuss altering the sign to bring it into our sign compliance. And there's also a historical landmark sign ordinance that we have to look at separately to consider it as a landmark sign.
You can look at it as part of a larger site plan. I will note that it's explicit in the ordinance that it can be looked at as part of a larger site plan. You don't have details on the sign, I'll note, but you don't necessarily have to look at the landmark sign on its own. It can be part of a larger site plan review.
So, we can bring it into this site plan review even though it's not on our site plan review?
It's part of it, yeah.
Yeah, you can, you can, it can be part of the site plan review. I mean, I know you don't have certain comments on it at this point, but you could include a determination on landmark sign status as part of the approval of this site plan.
You want to keep the sign, right?
Yeah, I mean, definitely we're going to keep the sign, so. So, I don't know. What's my next game of plan?
When this ordinance was written years ago, the object was to get rid of all the pole signs in town. And you notice that Nick's Country Kitchen, they used to have a tall sign. There it is gone. The old port had a tall sign. There it's gone. Tavern on the Main. We went through town and we just took them all down because that was the new way that we wanted Claussen to look, all these smaller monument signs. And I understand the property you have. It'd be hard to put a monument sign there and see it. But you have a building and I think you could put the sign on the building itself, which I think would suffice.
I just replaced the roof last year. We're running out of cash flow, so. I'll, because I know you're going to have to take it down and redo something to put something else up. Yeah, I mean, so.
I think the spirit of the ordinance is trying to do what is right for the community, trying to beautify that corridor and in addition to the businesses that you mentioned that have been brought into compliance right next door, what used to be a Pennzoil, Quicklube is now a Claussen Quicklube. And I noticed that the pole sign isn't there anymore. That property too was brought into compliance, so. There's a little bit of fairness conversation going on here. It's like, do you hold one business accountable to drastically different standards than you do the other one? I don't, I don't want the city of Claussen to have a reputation for being unfair. But I also think there's unique circumstances with this particular property as you discuss and you're trying to be competitive, you know. It seems like you're not a car wash if you don't have this elephant trunk system of vacuums out front and this is all coming out.
We have vintage nineteen eighty-six vacuums, so we're just trying to, you know, get them up to date. And they're a lot more efficient and I think they look better because they're easier to put the hoses back on.
Sure, sure. And I think they're more user-friendly too. And I, I'm torn on this one because I think we want to protect our businesses, support our businesses, but be fair with it. But as it happens, you know, if we're talking about a site plan approval, the objective is always to bring things up where it applies. As Ms. Redmond indicated.
But I think the only reason why I'm in it is because you guys changed my, that I can't be zoned as a car wash. So, I mean, that was changed, I didn't even know it was changed until Nick told me.
Is that right? It was a permitted use once upon a time?
Well, if it was there, it was. We don't know what year it changed, right?
There may not have been a zoning designation on this property when it was first built. I mean, I'm not real sure about that.
But if you, you know, in, I would like the commissioners to be able to see the actual site. I know we've probably driven by it, but it is helpful to note, I mean, maybe in that grass easement part, there might be room for a sign. I don't think it's fair to just say you got to paint it on your building. I feel like that's a little unfair in terms of business, right? Because, you know, businesses, every other business, if you're talking fairness, every other business is allowed to have a sign, right? So, to ask them to put it on their building doesn't seem right. So.
When this started, it started years back. I can't remember, probably ten years or better. It came in front of council and we used to have a huge sign at the Claussen Shopping Center. There are just a massive sign. And that one was eyesore and that was taken down. And then they wrote an ordinance and they tried to say that, like all the restaurants that have the signs, we want them taken down within the next five years. I think they gave a five-year term. Then we found out that, yeah, it was too hard on the businesses, so they kind of extended it. They kind of dropped it along the way. So, now the policy is that we're not going to force you to take it down within a five-year period. But when you come in front of us like this for a site plan, this is our time to take action and try to have sign removed.
But we also have the tools that give us the ability to consider the, this unique site. The, I think that circulation of cars coming in and out, the way that people are using vacuums and, you know, wiping cars and things is an important thing to consider when we're thinking about blocking an easement of sorts with a sign.
You think the monument signs at CVS and the old Rite Aid are comparable to a monument sign?
I don't think I said that.
Yeah, but that's what we did. That's the whole reason of the, the point of it is to get the signs.
I'm seeing to put one of those on the site would, I think that it would offer some aspects of safety that might not affect Rite Aid out front at the corner of Fourteen and, you know, crooks that this one does when you're literally blocking, you know, cars as they're coming in and out and people as they're driving and vacuuming and things. when you're literally blocking, you know, cars as they're coming in and out and people as they're driving and vacuuming and things like that. So I think that there's, maybe they can have that type of sign, but I do think it's important to consider those things, I guess.
Yeah, I just want to specifically note from the signed ordinance about landmark signs is that it states, landmark signs may be considered approved in the following locations within the city center and CMD districts at fourteen and Main, and then within 100 feet of the boundary of the city at the corner of Crooks Road and fourteen mile road, the corner of fourteen mile road and Rochester Road, the corner of Crooks Road and Maple Road, the corner of Maple Road and Main Street or South Main Street. And so we just looked, it is within 100 feet of that, so technically they're within the boundaries of where landmark signs can be approved. As Gil shared earlier, that sign has been there since nineteen sixty-nine, I believe he said. And so, I mean, that's what the planning commission would determine is that, is however long that, that is, is that able to be considered landmark sign?
Somebody actually wrote that ordinance with those dimensions in it?
I just read it verbatim. And this was approved, the last signed ordinance update.
It was only a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we talked about the chicken and stuff back when it was going on. So we were, someone was present.
So we want all the signs low in town, except when you're coming in, we can put them real tall at the entrances and everything.
I mean, it's not something that we're writing a new ordinance.
It's not saying they're approved for there, they're saying landmark signs can be approved within those boundaries.
Can be approved.
Yes.
So the ordinance kind of gives us that.
That guidance and ability to approve it when they're applying for site plan, yes.
It sounds like if he doesn't want to move it, he only has the ZPA or the historical route correct for the site plan.
The planning commission would approve landmark signs, which this, again, would have to be determined to be one. And the other criteria says a sign shall not be injurious to the public health, safety and welfare. The location and scale of the sign will be compatible with adjacent uses. The sign is designed to be durable and an acceptable plan for its maintenance has been submitted to the city. It goes on to also mention that the planning commission shall not approve a proposed landmark sign unless it makes affirmative finding that a minimum of one of the following criteria for review are met. The sign preserves, revives or restores a documented historical element of the site. The sign enhances the municipal identity of the city of Claussen or provides a gateway feature for the city or its downtown. So those are the criteria and the locations where they're permitted, landmark signs.
And tell me, can you remind me again of what the finding needs to be with? I know that Joe mentioned there were two points of, two findings that we'd have to have.
The sign preserves, revives or restores a documented historical element of the site or the sign enhances the municipal identity of the city of Claussen or provides a gateway feature for the city or its downtown.
Okay, I thought he went further after that. What, what, can you reference the ordinance again, three, is it?
Well, it goes on to say the planning commission may place conditions on its approval that it finds to be consistent with the protection of the health, safety and welfare of the city, its residents and visitors.
Oh.
So that's what wraps up that ordinance.
Further, are you serving?
I know we're not doing the site plan. We're only doing right now, we're just doing the special land use. So I'll, I'll motion accordingly. I do want to say that the, I, I like the improvements of vacuums. It seems to be all the, you know, the Jack's way of doing things, no offense. It's your competitor there, but like, it, I, it does, it does seem to add value, definitely to your site, I think. Of course, upgrading a nineteen eighties vacuum system is always great. So I will move to approve the special land use for thirteen thirty-nine West fourteen mile road, Paul's Auto Wash as presented.
Support.
Motion support, everybody happy with the motion? May I have roll call, please?
We forgot that big step again.
Oh, the open meeting.
Yep, the public hearing.
I table my motion.
Okay.
You'll table it?
Yes.
Okay, I will then open for public comment if anyone from the public here wishes to apply on anything. Seeing none, I will then close, public comment, and you can remotion.
Can I just reiterate my motion?
Yeah. Good for the record, just to make sure we, we conduct the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Pussero?
Yes.
And Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, again, item number 10 is consideration of the site plan application for thirteen thirty-nine West fourteen mile road, which is Paul's Auto Wash. Now we're looking at the actual site plan. Bring us back to the.
Yeah.
Well, I do have a question on the site, so I don't see a sealed site plan here, but the schematic that you have of the, the general layout, it, it shows that there's a curb being added. Is that the intention for, can I, can the applicant? So, so the curb, there's a curb shown on this plan. There's not one currently, I know that, I know there's a problem with traffic going in and out of what was the Happy's Pizza. Are you actually, is that intended to put that curb in?
On the, the old Happy Pea, there's no curb.
No, I know. On, on this site plan, they're showing a curb to be installed. Is the intention to actually put that curb in? Because this is not a sealed plan.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it, we're just replacing the asphalt.
Okay.
Because it transitions into the concrete. I don't know if you got the, the top site view thing?
Yeah, I haven't seen, yeah.
So, I mean, it's just replacing the asphalt, there's no curbing. The only, I guess, curbing were.
It shows it.
There's an existing curb there.
I think.
No, there, no, not, not circling in from off of Crooks Road. So will you, 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 that was being used as like a temporary access point for Paul's Auto Wash?
Yeah, it's been, yeah, that, that portion of it's been used for years, even when Taco Bell was there.
So is this curb actually going to be installed now? Because there's not one now, there's not one there now?
No, there's not one now, because we're budding up to that, that concrete.
Okay.
Behind, behind the dumpster for the Pennzoil or the Claussen oil change. That's all flat.
It shows a curb, proposed curb on the plan, on this plan.
That's just, well, oh, that, behind the dumpster, I was.
No, all the way, the entire lane.
So if you look on Google Maps, it looks like there is a tiny curbing that goes up until the dumpster enclosure. But there's nothing beyond that besides parking blocks, which I think was your question, are you going to take that to access?
Yeah, it's all gone now, I mean, it's, it's still in access.
So I think in their design, I think they were just showing that there is a, a small curbing that exists up until their last vacuum, which is right where the park, where the dumpster enclosure is. But to your point, I was also curious if we could add anything beyond that to cut traffic off from cutting through that vacant lot.
Is that, is that cut through, is it actually officially being used as an access to Paul's right now?
Uh, yes.
It is, okay. Okay.
Are, when you say there's existing, are you talking about the parking bumpers?
Yeah.
That are there like these right here? Is that what you're referring to?
So right here, if there's an access point coming off of Crooks.
Okay.
So there's not, there's not a curb at all.
Yeah.
So, I just wasn't, I wasn't sure if that was an actual, like, permitted use of traffic flow coming through that, through that old Happy's Pizza.
Yeah, other than it's been open like that, I, since Taco Bell and Chicken Shack and Happy's Pizza.
Zorbo's or whatever it was.
There was a bunch of them.
Yeah. Okay.
So it, it is just a reminder, so is it preferential for you to have traffic going from essentially the vacuum area to the oil change facility?
Oh, not to the oil change, no.
It's, it currently is possible, but.
I mean, right now, there's, you know, the vacuums are concrete pillar vacuums. And they kind of like block people from cutting through, but once I do that, it's going to be open.
Right.
I mean, I, I.
Sort of, I think the flow into the oil change places is in from the parking lot and then on to fourteen miles, so sort of strange to do it, but maybe, yeah.
Just looking at traffic flow from all these areas, I mean, there's, now there's going to be a potential, because you're, you're going to be taking up what was the vacuum stations now. And now there's a potential for a lot more access points.
And you're going to have a flow of traffic that's coming in and out of the car wash there, right? Is that the, that's where the cars will line up as well, right?
Correct, yeah.
So is that the parking lot that you're redoing, that same one? Because that one looked like it was.
Yeah, I'm doing, actually, I'm only doing the parking lot that is adjacent to the oil change.
Okay, so that, that exact parking, so, um, yeah.
There was an existing asphalt curb there now, are you leaving that existing asphalt curb?
It's all broken up, I was going to, I can replace it or I can, yeah, right now it's all broken up. And I don't even know who's, who has, who's has it. I don't know if it's on our side or the other side.
I think it would be important to have that there. I think they're right in terms of keeping the flow and, you know.
Oh, keeping it, yeah.
Distracting traffic flow.
Yeah.
That's fine.
It's, yeah. Because you, you will be opening up to many possibilities now, so.
I mean, because eventually Rite Aid will be busy, well, and I know it's not right next to Rite Aid, but, you know, chicken, not Chicken Shack, Happy's Pizza, we gotta, we gotta imagine what it might be. In the future, when there's cars that are using that as a business, it, it could cause potential problems if there isn't something there. So, I mean, it's on the site plan, so do we need to have?
Yeah, it's illustrated on the site plan as a curb running continuously from the approach into your, into the parking lot and all the way to the back where that, where that large sign is.
Okay.
Because there's not, yeah, right now, there's no, there's no curb, well, yeah, okay. Just, yeah, just curious.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Actually, one more for the applicant, I'm sorry, but you can, I'm sorry. Just the, the color of the vacuums, it looks like there was quite a choice. Was it the red that you had?
Yeah, we're doing the red.
Yeah, okay.
Red with black holes.
I just wanted to confirm, thank you. That was all for me.
No further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, does anybody want to discuss where we stand on this, this sign thing, or do you guys just want?
I'll make that motion and we can discuss it, what do you say?
Sure.
Yeah, so I, I move to approve the site plan application for thirteen thirty-nine West fourteen mile road, Paul's Auto Wash as presented for discussion. We can amend it with any additional concerns you have after discussion.
Okay.
Do we need support of that before we get into discussion?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have support then, and then we can carry on with discussion. It sounds, it sounds tough, but my personal feeling is I'd like to see the sign come down because I think we forced every other business in town to lower their signs. And I think it's only playing fair to, why did we force them to do that and not force this sign to come down? And now is the time for us to do it. I think we have the power to do it here, and if we don't, if, I think if we deny it because of that, can they, am I correct that they can go to the zoning board of appeals and they could override us on that?
That would be the place for them to go, because they would be appealing a decision of the planning commission, yeah.
Yeah.
And when they go to zoning board of appeals, they have a certain criteria that they can make that, make that request with, right? Because they're quite limited in scope of that approval, is that correct?
If they're seeking a variance to keep a sign up, what they would have to do is show that they have a practical difficulty to replacing that sign. So, in this case, you have a constrained site with two areas where you could potentially put a sign, both of which are in the clear vision zone.
So here's my concern is that if, if, if they're not able to submit a site plan with the historical preservation, if that's something they want to do, you know, in this, some reason goes to the ZBA with a motion and, and then it just, you know, doesn't meet them, then they didn't have that full opportunity to fully use the historical preservation. So I, I almost feel like we should pause on it, kind of give it back so that they can talk with Nick and fully understand their options before they, you know, we move forward with it. But that's just my, my kind of gut on things. I, I don't want to make the decision for them and then set them up to not have the ability to actually fully use our, our ordinances. You look like you want to say something.
I'm thinking, so if, if we just make it where the, either sign comes down, we have to do a ZBA appeal, can they come back and try to do the historical landmark angle if they got turned down by the ZBA for the site plan?
Yeah, I mean, it risks becoming a feedback loop there. So, I, I mean, what I would say is if the, if the zoning board of appeals denies them, then most likely they're, they're not keeping the sign. So, I mean, I guess there's a couple of things that we, we'd be looking for if they were to submit something for that landmark sign. We'd be looking for a, a precise measurement from that property line at the corner to the sign to make sure it actually is within that hundred feet. Seems to be, but we're eyeballing it on Google aerials. So we need to actually know what the, what the distance is. And if it's over a hundred feet, well, then that's a problem, because then they'd be outside that area. So there's, there's that. And then there's also just, you know, we need actual, you know, documentation of the sign, how tall was it, et cetera, so that we know going forward what sign we've actually approved and are dealing with. So, so there's definitely some things that would have to be submitted for your review so that you could actually make an informed decision on that. And again, if they find that it's actually further than a hundred feet, that avenue kind of goes away for them, so.
But they're no worse off, they could still go to ZPA, right?
They can, yeah, they could still go to the zoning board of appeals and, and make their case there to, to keep the sign.
And I think it would be helpful as a commission to actually look at this site and explore the opportunities for a complying, a sign that is complying and what that might look like and if, if that is in fact a better option. Because I, I don't know that, how many options they actually do have. So I think that's part of an important consideration. If the new sign is, does compromise the health and safety by way of the circulation of cars and people, that's unique to a car wash, I would say that this sign is preferred. Of course, you know, it's much taller than what we prefer, but, I mean, I don't know, do we tell them to take it down? Six feet, I have no idea. But I think it's something worth exploring and getting more information on before we make a decision. And I, most importantly, would like the applicant to be able to kind of decide which direction they feel more comfortable going. If that makes sense, that's just my opinion.
The first thing they're going to do is measure to see if they're actually eligible. And if it turns out the answer is no, well, then that kind of tells us everything.
Would it be appropriate to ask the applicant if he has a preference on, on us ruling or on us, you know, giving him time to decide to resubmit this? A resubmission wouldn't require much, it's not going to require fees and things like that, but it would give him time to get, gather more information? Is that appropriate to ask him or not?
Maybe right before that, do we have time on the next meeting to be able to look at this again? Because I don't want to hold them up for months, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a couple of things on the next agenda, but nothing like.
We could definitely fit it in this, okay.
Yeah.
I mean.
We don't have seven things on the next agenda, you know?
You never know.
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand what the play would look like, though. So, if I understand you correctly, we are missing this information about the hundred feet. If we had the hundred feet confirmed, that it's less than a hundred and feet, then that gives, if I understand Nick correctly, that gives the planning commission some flexibility in overlooking this sign on the basis of it being a landmark sign. So, either way, we would have to approve the site plan with that. I guess, we, we would still need a variance, right?
I mean, not if it's approved as a landmark sign, because that's its own special category of approval.
We, we would do that, though, the planning commission would do that.
The planning commission would make a determination on a landmark sign, yeah.
Okay, so that would be a little, a little. Okay, so that would be a little, a little extra thing we'd have to do to, to decide that it is or decide that it isn't, I'm not going to say that it's one way or the other.
Right, and if it's found that it's not eligible, obviously, that comes off the table.
Information to know.
Yes.
If, if in fact we have that hundred feet, uh, or not, and then that gives us, in my opinion, a path to, to do it without, ZBA, or, or say, you know, this absolutely clear feedback to the applicant that they have to go to ZBA for that portion of it.
Yeah, and I think it gives us the opportunity to see, um, like I said before, take a deeper look at the site. Joe usually will provide us more photos of the site, and, um, Joe, I'd love your opinion on, on, um, you know, the conforming sign and, and the placement of it, I think the applicant was right in saying that, um, there is a struggle there, right?
Yeah.
So, I think, I think it'll, it does allow that as well.
I, I think we deserve some compassion for the circumstance of the, of that, um, of that particular area.
It sounds like you're changing your motion to make a motion to postpone this, am I correct?
Yeah, it sounds like my motion's gonna die on my own recommendation.
You can, you can withdraw it prior to a vote, uh.
But I think it's a healthy conversation, and, um, you know, I only made the motion because I, I think it's a little more disciplined conversation when it's going off of a specific direction, so, you know, we, we have a tendency to talk and then make the motion, but we, we can make the motion and then talk. So. Yeah, I, I, I think Paul's Auto Wash has been a good business, a good friend to Clausen, um, I, I think it's historic. Very hard, very subjective debate whether it's more historic than the chicken. You know, I'm happy that they're trying to invest in their business to, to, to be solvent, to be a success, I think that's, you know, deserves a lot of consideration because it's a hard time to invest in things these days. And I'm not sure I like all of these other hedge fund car washes, I don't know. But I, I, I very much feel for the people who have been brought up into compliance at great cost, um, against their schedule, to facilitate a fair treatment of everybody, and that didn't happen with this sign originally, you know. One, one business was treated one way and another business was treated a different way, and that's, that's not good. And it's water under the bridge, and, you know, our city attorneys had to fight battles to make it, to make it so.
Are you inclined then to remove your previous motion and start over again?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Support, if I have to.
Okay, that's, that's withdrawn, so now I will entertain a new motion.
Okay. Which is? Do I have to make that motion?
Either you or Aaron.
We're on a roll, I don't know.
Anyone can make a motion, but.
Go for it, Nate.
To postpone?
Yeah.
Okay. I only ask because I think we can postpone regardless, but I'll, I'll make a motion to postpone the site plan approval for, um, for Paul's car wash until such time as we have an understanding of the setback from, uh, I guess, Crook's Road, right?
Look at the landmark sign.
Yeah, on the basis of a landmark sign designation.
Support it.
Motion support. Everybody happy with it? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hera?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on hold, but we'll, we'll work with you. Okay, agenda item number eleven is consideration of the site plan application for eight sixty Batter Avenue, which is primary caregiver facility.
Yep, uh, good evening again, planning commission. The, uh, site plan in front of you is for, as you stated, the primary caregiver facility in the I-one limited industrial district at eight sixty Batter, um, this, uh, item was on the agenda for the, uh, July eighth meeting, so you probably gotta look at it then, um, but the applicant actually took the time to revise the site plans, update a few items, uh, provide a bit more clarity on some of the, uh, I guess, identified items last time. So, quickly going over things, uh, the site's pretty small, it's point three-three acres, it's on the south side of Batter, just south of the, uh, border with Troy. The building is about fifty, five thousand six hundred sixty-one square feet. The footprint's smaller than that because there's a little s- mezzanine, I think is what we would call it, um, that serves as a separate story. The, there's a little circle driveway and there's thirteen space to the rear of the building. Obviously, as we've kind of gone over with the animal hospital and some of the other redevelopment cases you've seen recently, we, you know, we try to bring some of the site into compliance, uh, when it's reasonable and when it's possible, when those non-conformities are present. And there's quite a bit of non, there's a couple non-conformities here. So, going over the use, so obviously the use was recently, uh, inserted as a permitted use in two thousand twenty-one in this I-one zoning district, this is a, a primary caregiver cannabis facility, so it's, it's in accordance to the, uh, Michigan Medical Marijuana Act of two thousand eight. This is not recreational cannabis or commercial cannabis or that type of, uh, use that, you know, um, you know, a lot of communities have opted into, this is the medical version, so they're allowed to have three caregivers growing seventy-two plants each, so a maximum of two hundred sixteen total plants would be in the entire building. The side setback is a, uh, or the front setback's slightly non-conforming, um, that's not, you know, I don't think anyone's gonna try to make them move their building, but it's ju- just definitely a non-conformity to, to point out. Um, in terms of off-street parking, so there's a little bit of, uh, I guess conflicting information in a way, in terms of kind of the zoning ordinances, definition of gross, or this zoning ordinance provision that gross leasable floor areas, the measurement tool for parking here. We've, 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 we kind of brought both interpretations to the table here, so if you use gross floor area, because gross leasable area is not defined in the ordinance, if you use gross floor area, they do not comply right now and they need fifteen parking spaces, however, the applicant in their materials has argued, we should be using usable floor area, which results in forty-five hundred square feet and, uh, would require a minimum of twelve spaces. So, that's definitely, uh, something to consider here. The plans continued to show the little front circle drive parking spaces, but we can't by the ordinance requirements, count those as parking spaces, because they don't have proper maneuvering that meets the ordinance's requirements. So, that's why, even though it looks like they're providing fifteen spaces on the plans, they're actually only providing thirteen, so we can't count those two. In terms of, uh, loading, they've provided a loading space in the rear parking area. I'm gonna jump to, because we, this is a decently long review, I'm gonna jump to landscaping. Obviously, when sites are, are going through redevelopment, the ordinance does not require them to be brought into full compliance with the ordinance, but you should determine that it's being brought into gradual compliance or a proportional compliance to kind of what they're asking for. So, they do provide a bunch of arboretis on that, uh, west property line, I think around fifteen of them. Um, and they also provide a tree and some shrubs in that front little, front yard island area, so they are providing some landscaping. However, we pointed out a full detailed landscaping plan, so more details need to be provided in terms of, uh, plant species, you know, size of species and some of those zoning ordinance requirements, um, prior to final site plan approval. So, I mean, it could be a condition of approval that perhaps Nick checks administratively, or it could be something that is brought back, so you see it. But, um, that's not just a, it's actually interesting, it's not just a site plan approval requirement through the zoning ordinances, site standards, it's also a specific requirement of the primary caregiver standards as well, so it's kind of a double down in a way. They do not provide a, uh, uh, particular dumpster enclosure. They've discussed a waste management plan, which is a requirement of the primary caregiver use standards, so they have provided that. They speak to it in that, uh, the waste will be stored in a lock, locked dumpster adjacent to the facility. It'll store waste and there will be a, a hundred gallon waste containers that will store the marijuana waste. That's what they've said in their plan, I would recommend you probably confirm that with them, what they're doing, because if they are going to be storing waste outside, the zoning ordinance does say that outdoor trash facilities need to be enclosed. So, even though you can't, nobody can see it from rights of way or other properties because there's fencing and, you know, um, obstructions to begin with, the ordinance does bring up the term enclosure, so. Otherwise, I mean, as you did with the animal hospital, I mean, perhaps if they're storing waste inside, just until it's being picked up for removal, I mean, that may be something you ask them about. The durable materials appear to be met, so that's fine, um, or actually, I skipped lighting. So, lighting, um, was another thing like landscaping, it's kind of a double down where it's a site standard in the ordinance in general for site plans, but it's also doubled down in the primary caregiver standards as well, so it is important, they did not provide a lighting or photometric plan. They, they call out where their fixtures are, they're all, they all appear to be wall packs, and with wall packs, it's really important they're, they're, shielded so that the light's directed down and not out and not, you know, so that a passerby isn't, doesn't see the glare and the, you know, of the light. In terms of this, those use standards for the primary caregiver facilities, um, through, uh, through verbal conversations with the applicant, they've discussed that each caregiver will have a large room and a small room on the floor plan, so it's clear that they will meet the minimum, seven hundred fifty square feet of floor area per caregiver if they follow that. We just suggest they note it on their plan, so it's binding by the plan's sake, so that we can confirm actual compliance. That's something that we just noted, you know, should be put on the plan, you can ask them if that's their intention as well. But through conversations, it sounds like that is, that's been their plan the whole time, was a small room and a large room.
So, how about that, did you ask them how that might work in terms of, cause I, recalling, each one's supposed to be locked in, only accessible by?
They would all be locked, so I assume there's some kind of passcode or key that each user uses to access their two rooms. There's the shared common hallway. You know, but, but you, you're right, each room does need to be locked, so, um, if that's something that you think needs to be put on the floor plan, I think that's a good idea to also note as a, uh, potential requirement or condition. They might, they might say that somewhere on the plan, there is a lot of material. But it's definitely a good consider, it's, it's a good comment. So, if you look at the floor plan, the common hallway does provide access to each room, so.
So, on page three of AEW's notes, um, they have several comments about the water and sewer. I mean, is there even an, an agreement with the city of Troy?
That's something to ask, I think Nick or the applicant.
Sticking point.
Let me just quickly cover the last couple of points here. Appearance, so the building does have use standards related to windows, um, so we just need confirmation that the windows will be frosted, screened. Through a conversation with them last, after the last meeting, it wasn't really a meeting, but after talking to them, they confirmed that they will do that. That's always been their intention, um, but again, it should just be noted on the plan. Odor, so you're required by the ordinance to approve the odor control methods, um, and it does list that such methods may include, but are not limited to activated carbons filters slash scrubbers, internal exhaust fans, odor neutralizers, and air purifiers, says that ozone generators shall not be permitted as a method unless such generator is not audible outside the primary caregiver facility, so just, um, you'll want to run that by the applicant.
That's kind of out of our expertise, I'm not sure how we are gonna control that.
I mean, if they can confirm that they have an activated carbon filter scrubber, internal exhaust fan, an odor neutralizer, or air purifier, I assume that you're moving in the right direction, um.
Yeah, but I, I think this needs to be in the pla, in the, in the plan, I mean, that, this needs to be very well documented, part of the packet, exactly what the make, model of that.
Equipment's being used.
Yeah, let's see if they provide any of that in their operations plan, actually, without, without reading it in front of you right now.
I didn't see it, I could have, maybe the applicant can correct me if I missed it, but, you know, in general, you know, the screening for the windows, like, if they're frosted, for sure, like, there should be evidence of that in the plan, like, we shouldn't have to guess or assume. In fact, we should never assume, so it has to be in that plan, and especially for a facility like this, the odor abatement strategy has to be very transparent and very specific.
Yep. Lastly, the additional authorizations, they provide all of those with the one exception that, uh, they've stated they will provide the city, the primary caregiver state licenses, I still have not, we have, still have not seen a copy of that, Nick, have you received those yet? So, um, you know, obviously, that's just a matter of paperwork. Oh, was it? The primary caregiver state license copies.
We're required to verify those before we approve it.
We, we have all the other stuff, consent to inspections, property owner acknowledgement, hold harmless. I did not see the state license copies, though. So, just finishing off, just so I can move to the next point, um, I, AEW provide, as you saw, AEW provided a very detailed review. Police department made a request, uh, they had submitted that, uh, in order to better protect the health, safety, general welfare of the public, and to deter, prevent break-ins, a video surveillance system on the premises shall be installed and operated. I believe the applicant actually did put something of the sort in their operations plan, so I don't doubt that they will do that. It just might be something you want to confirm with them, that is, that, that's still their intention. And then fire department, so fire department requested that the gate and fence be relocated to align with the rear of the building. Uh, the fire marshal went out there and provided some photographs of the site and analyzed it. The fire marshal said that, in their belief, the fence and gate, if relocated to the rear of the building line, would, would maximize about seventeen feet of driveway width, which they've stated they, they want to get back to the rear, right, Nick? So, it's, it's, it would provide a function to expand more of the pavement if they were to relocate that gate towards the rear of the building line.
You mean for the firefighters to access with their trucks, right?
That's my, my interpretation of the comments, yep. Uh, so that's mostly, that's our review, that's, that was most of the green or bolded language we put in the letter, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Just to kind of follow up on your question about the utilities, so it is a very unique area over there where Batter is because the, all of the right of way, uh, is the city of Troy's, and so we don't have sewer. We did have a water main installed there, but not having sewer there, uh, is difficult because any agreement would have to come through the city of Troy. But as the, um, uh, review states, it appears that there's connections underneath the, the landscape company on Rochester Road and Batter, uh, and so AW does ask in their report that the agreement, whether an existing agreement or they'll need to get an agreement to be, to be able to maintain that, and so one of the conditions would be to, for them to, of course, abide by the engineering, engineering review and approval of AW, but you could specifically note that in the motion as well.
I thought it said that was, that was removed from the plan because it didn't exist, and that they have to access it from Troy, did I read that wrong?
Where, where was that again?
I thought I read that at, at one point it was, it was shown, but then removed. The sewer from the advanced auto. the sewer from the advanced auto, or advanced, um, landscape. I could be wrong.
Oh, that's on five A.
Uh, page three.
Five A.
Existing, an existing san- uh, six inch sanitary running, running along, yeah, point three. Yeah, so the, yeah, so they'd have to have an agreement with the city of Troy.
Correct. So that would just need to be stated in their motion as it falls under engineering review.
I mean, I think it's just a point of ambiguity, right? We don't know where the sanitary line even goes. All AEW is saying is it doesn't go to ours. Is that fair to say?
I don't know if that's a hundred percent fair to say. I just think it's unknown.
On point, on, on point A, the sanitary lead line, uh, work has been removed from the plan. We assume that the, uh, prior lead shown does not exist.
So maybe that'd be a good question for the applicant.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Nick or anybody, or? Would the applicant like to, uh, address us?
Hi, everybody. My name is Brad. Um, I'm here, uh, as counsel for the applicant, John Simona. Uh, many of you might have met, uh, my colleague Kevin. Um, I'm here in his place today. He had a childcare issue. So we're gonna answer all those questions that we went through, uh, just now and, uh, I'm gonna try to do it in order, um, based on the way that they were discussed. So the first, uh, the parking, um, the ordinance that allows the, uh, caregiver to exist in the I one zoning district does say, um, gross leasable area. Um, and so, if you use that and you, a- and, and, and it was mentioned before that the leasable area is not defined in the ordinance, and so, you know, we're, we're hoping that that term is, is still used, just in the sense of area that's able to be leased, right? So that'd be forty-five hundred, uh, square feet. And that would allow us to not have a non-conforming use and us be able to cross that item off the list, so, um. That is what we're seeking. The, the, we do recognize that the circle drive or the semi-circle drive in the front does not comply with the ordinance as far as a parking spot. It's really more meant as a, um, able to, you know, package drop off or whatever it might be, um, but it is not a parking spot, so. We have thirteen. We're hoping that, uh, by having the gross leasable area be used, that we'd only need twelve and that would be, uh, conforming, um, with the ordinance. Um, number two, the landscaping, um, the, the, the landscaping, uh, we have done the, um, like, uh, a lot of work so far to try to make that as, as, uh, look as good as possible with the, uh, uh, the R provides and everything, um. We are happy to submit a plan showing exactly what that would be, um. The third item, uh, there were talk, it was mentioned that there's, um, the concern about the, the entry into each individual unit. There is going, there's going to be keypad or already is keypad entry, um, on each unit. Um, so there is no entering from one tenant to the other. Uh, that's required under, uh, you know, by the CRA, and so there, there'll be no issue with that or any, anybody going into anybody's unit. Um, cannot have people walking in and having access to medical marijuana plants, so highly secure. Um, the lighting, uh, slash photometric plan, uh, plan, that would be another item that we would, uh, like to submit, um, as like a supplemental item to Nick. Um, but, uh, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong here. It was like the LED lights outside, um, and I believe they're all facing down as it was mentioned.
Well, they're facing down because they're so bright, um, we don't wanna face them out. They, they go out too far as far as the lighting. But at nighttime, it's fully lit all around the building except the front. We didn't, um, the neighbor across the street, the guy for the, the tree guy, had asked us if we could tone down the lighting in the front, which we did. But, I mean, it's totally visible at night all around the facility. So, I mean, we made sure of that because we wanna be able to access the cameras and, you know, we need to be.
Cameras are part of your program here?
Yes. Yep, yep, so video surveillance, um, there's clearly visible video that is actively monitoring at all times around the entire perimeter of the building.
Is that video saved and, um, accessible by the police if needed? I know that that was.
Yeah, that was, it was brought by the police, or, or it was brought up by the police and, yeah, that's, um, it's, it's, it's saved in the cloud, right?
In the security plan, it mentioned forty-five day at least retention of the video.
Did it mention that?
I don't know if that was an ad from the last packet, since I wasn't here for that event, but, yeah, there's a security, um, plan in the packet today.
Yeah.
And I think it mentioned a forty-five day retention of all video.
Okay. I don't remember seeing that, but.
I, I, I was under the impression that the, um, it said the police, the, 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 the local law enforcement wanted the, um, the, the video monitoring, um, but that video is saved in the cloud. There's retention in the cloud. Yeah, the forty-five days would not be a problem.
Okay, I think that might even be a state standard even too, so.
Before I continue on to other items, are there any items you guys wanna discuss in the interim? Because there's a lot of items.
Uh, there, there was another item brought up by, um, our planner about the fire department and the fence being moved. Um, was that something you guys discussed?
Uh, I was just wondering if you want me to continue on with the items, or did you wanna comment on anything or talk or have any ques- follow-up questions about what I've already brought up?
Can we go in sequence first before we?
Oh, sure, sure, no problem. I just wanna make sure we're doing what you guys want.
Can I interject for a second?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia and, and members of the board, sorry, don't get too nervous. Um, perhaps a question that elicits from, uh, um, the applicant, a further explanation as to why gross leasable area should be utilized? And how is it, what makes it, what brings it down to forty-five hundred square feet and not the larger square footage that we're dealing with, with? Um, I think that may be necessary for your decision making this evening or beyond today.
Do you agree, you can carry on with your train of thought and you're letting up probably answering most of our questions by doing it your way, and then if we have any outstanding questions, we'll come back to you on those.
Great.
So if you wanna just carry on where you were.
Um, regarding the dumpster enclosure, so, um, to our understa- uh, we, we know that it was mentioned that, uh, the ordinance requires there to be a dumpster enclosure, um. So as of right now, we have the fence that is locked that goes across the parking lot, or not the parking lot, the, uh, dri- the, the driveway, um, which, which would allow a vehicle to get to the back of the building with the parking spaces. The dumpster is also locked, so, um, though it would be, uh, I guess, a larger enclosure than, than it would be if it was like a dedicated small enclosure directly abutting the dumpster itself. The dumpster is not visi- is not visible when the, uh, when the fence is closed, so, um, and with both those being locked, we're hoping that that, uh, level of enclosure is sufficient, um, for that dumpster.
And what type of waste are you throwing away?
Well, if, predominantly it would be, uh, like clippings and, and whatever, like, like biomass refuse.
It's stuff that's allowable for the trash people to pick up and take and haul off someplace. It's, it's not. Not anything.
No, yeah, no, it's, 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 there is no, um, it's not, it's not like a scheduled substance. It's, it's, it's a literal plant clipping. It's no different than, uh, the types of, uh, garbage that you would produce at any other kind of plant.
Go into a van fill or recycle bin?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
Um. All right, uh, the next item that was mentioned were the windows. So, um, the windows have cinder blocks behind them. They're completely enclosed behind them and the window itself is, is tinted dark, so it's just a reflection of the outside. There is nothing to see. There's no, nobody passing by is gonna be able to see any kind of lights or growing activity or anything. It's just a wall behind it. Um, next item is the, uh, odor prevention. We have, uh, multiple throughout the entire building, carbon super filtration systems. Um, we are happy to provide those technical specifications, um, to supplement the materials that have already been submitted. Um, that is not a problem, but there will be no odors after it goes through our system. Um, next item would be, um, the, the licenses, so we've provided the numbers, uh, that the state issues for those primary caregivers, but we're happy to provide, uh, like clean scans of just the actual primary caregiver license card to make it as simple and easy as possible to register and confirm that they exist. Um, video surveillance, we already touched upon, um, but yeah, we, we are happy to provide access to that to local law enforcement or co- comply with any issue that would come about, but the actual footage is saved in the cloud. Um. Fire department clearance, so this is a tricky one because on one end of the driveway, you have a mulched area with the actual power lines, uh, like the big poles for the power lines or the top of the lines coming up. On the other hand, on the other side, you have the building itself. And so from the power line to the actual building is fifteen feet and three inches. So unless if we, you know, went and hit the power line, there's, there's no way to increase that distance, so. I know that the fire marshal suggested moving the fence back, um. The, if they're, if in a downside scenario, if a fire truck had to go into the back of the parking lot, they would still only have fifteen feet and three inches between the power pole and the building, so. Um, what we're, right, as of right now, there is, um, the fence slightly a butts out from the building and we have a picture of it, if it would be helpful, um.
This was, this was a pre-existing, by the way.
Right.
End gate, um, the actual gates had broken off and we had somebody custom build those and put them back together, thinking that it was in compliance, but the fire marshal came by, uh, last week, he said we needed a bigger entrance, so that's the issue we're having now.
So on both sides of the driveway, there is a little, um, I guess, wall of the gate like this. We're happy to remove the one on the side of the building, which is right here, to try to maximize the potential space of getting into the back. Um, that's not a problem, um. I'm just, we're, we're just not so su- we're, we're just not sure how moving it into the back would help, but we're happy to do whatever we can to mitigate any kind of problems with that, um.
So that, that one on the building, I see what you mean about the other one is aligned with the pole on the other side of the drive, correct? So if you took that one away, the fire trucks still don't get more clearance because there's a pole.
Right.
But that one is like probably about, is that like a four foot?
Um, uh, the one that's on the building?
Yeah, the one attached to the building. It looks maybe three and a half, four feet. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, so it's right about that, because the clearance right now is, is, I would say, it's, it's like, it's, it's fifteen feet and three inches exactly from the pole to the building, and so I believe the clearance right now is twelve feet, so we'd be gaining about three feet, three inches. Um, if we were to remove that little wall portion of the gate abutting the building.
So what did the fire marshal say? How much space do they need?
They, they were saying seventeen feet, but the seventeen feet does not exist, or it's not possible.
Do you see the picture?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, the, the engineering report said that we could, they're, they're, they're shooting for fifteen, which would be in theory possible if we moved that. I, I know.
Especially with the utilities there, right?
Right, and so if the utility pole wasn't there, that would be one thing. But because of the existence of the utility pole, even if we move the fence, we would still have a problem, so we're.
If we move, if we remove the stationary wall against the building, we could have fourteen feet, six inches if we let the.
The fence directly there, to try to maximize it as much as possible.
That would eliminate us having to move it all the way back. That would be the least costly, you know, on our end, otherwise we'd.
I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that personally without the fire department, but.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to take a look and sign off on it. Sign off.
Cause I see what you mean about the pole, right? But, you know, I don't know what purpose that one will serve. Are you still trying to close that if you have this one here, but this one's not here? Um.
We, we would want the, the fence to, to be, or the gate to close entirely to, to, to help with other things, like, you know, not having anybody go and dump their trash by the dumpster, hiding the dumpster.
But you're saying you're okay with removing the one by the hu- the, the building and keeping this one, right? Um, so would, would you still move, have it enclosed further back then as well? Or how are you gonna enclose it? Are you gonna attach something to the building then and have a swinging gate that way?
Correct. The idea would be to fix it to the building so it's as flush as possible to maximize the amount of room that they could poss- uh, in a downside scenario.
That would be the easiest fix on our end.
Right.
Unless we just go customize a brand new gate in the back, but then that's, you know, gonna be costly.
It should be about the same amount of feet though in the back, if you moved it to the back of the building, right?
And that's exactly our concern. We don't, it's, it's like, of course, we wanna do everything we can to, uh, promote the health and safety of everybody around and in the building. But at the same time, if, because of the existence of the, of the pole, or just, we just don't see how it would be a benefit to move it back because you would still have to drive right through the pole.
Yeah, but at least it's not on you then if there's a fire and they can't get there.
Right, right.
Whatever the remedy is, I mean, as long as the fire marshal approves it, I mean, it's, you know, do whatever you have to do.
And that can be entirely the solution that we, that we reach here is that we get, you know, approval from the fire marshal in whatever way, but.
Have you had that dialogue yet? Cause you have a couple's potential, you're meeting me in the middle, but you haven't had that dialogue with the fire marshal yet. Cause it, was that request a shell that you had to move it back before their approval?
The, 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 the request as of right now is shell, but, um, you know, it would be our hope to have that discussion, um.
Can we have a definition of shell?
A suggestion versus you must.
Fire marshal just came out like a week ago and, and said that.
Right, it was, it was recent.
New to us, because we're thinking the gate is existing. We didn't even think it was an issue.
Yeah.
Gate was there already. We didn't tamper with the gate.
So before I go too far, cause I do that all the time, do you have other points that you wanted to review?
Um, the last item that I had was the water service running across the property line, so w- we are happy to get that agreement. We don't have one right now, so I just don't know exactly what that agreement is that we need, or is, is, if, if we, if it's a private contract, it's not a problem, um. We, it, it would, we just wanna make sure that if that, if, if a private contract would suffice, that we would just go do that and provide it to Nick, or whatever it is, but we just wanna make sure that we're getting what we need.
I'm sure Nick will help you with that.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like the water service is the issue. It's the sanitary.
And where you connect.
Cause as of right now, we don't really know where it's at.
Oh, with the city of Troy?
Well, it's shown, at, at one point, it stated that it was coming from advan- the, your neighbor. And it's no longer on the site plan, and now it's confirmed that the city of Troy, the sanitary is in the city of Troy.
Yeah, you know, that used to be one parcel, the two buildings.
Yeah.
Cause I talked to the owner next door, uh, landscape supply, so it used to be one parcel and everything ran. The water and the sewage ran underneath to the, through their parcel onto Rochester Road. And I believe the storm runs to Troy on Batter. And, um, I talked to Dave, one of the owners, and he said he didn't have a problem signing off on anything as far as, uh, a waiver or. And um I talked to Dave, one of the owners, and he said he didn't have a problem signing off on anything as far as uh a waiver or. An easement, because it was, you know, existed.
So I guess, yeah.
As one parcel before, but it got split and.
And then from the city of Troy, we're gonna have to go get a letter from them confirming. That, you know, it's their jurisdiction and that there's not an approving that needs to be made or whatever and um.
Right, so, so you'll need a letter from Troy, being able to utilize their storm system. Uh an agreement and approval from the city engineer, being able to utilize the sanitary system coming from. What is advanced landscape, and then I think the water, it's stated that the water, there's a water service that actually services that property at the curb line. So water sounds like it's not an issue.
Right.
So it's just the engineer approval and easement approval or, or use approval. Is, you're gonna have to have that before we can.
It sounds slightly tricky if you're buying water from one city and dumping it down up to another city, I can imagine.
That's why I'm bringing it up. Three utilities are coming from three different places.
So their existing water is from Rochester Road and Claussen. The city of Claussen, it did a project with Troy on batter to have water mains, so we do have water main there. They have the ability to tap into it, but currently their access is just underneath advanced, so. It's not coming from multiple areas, their water is still currently coming from Rochester Road, it's just not directly from their curb line where their frontage is.
Right, yes, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, so the, the water service isn't an issue, that's what it sounds like, it's the sanitary and the storm is the issue. As it's stated.
Comes, comes through Rochester, correct?
The, the site plan that I'm looking at does show a six inch sanitary lead going on, from their building underneath advanced to Rochester.
Sewerage also goes underneath advanced to Rochester Road, it's just the storm that goes to batter, which is Troy. The storm, yeah, we had a camera and we had the engineer.
So is it a separate, uh well, I mean, I'm sure the, the engineers have the input on what's, what's permitted, I mean, it's not up to us to say that, but. It's just a requirement that it's.
It's probably like a legalese kind of thing, right, if it's their technical thing.
For, for example, the two properties to the east of batter, the, those now have the access to water. But there's no um sanitary there at all, and so if there's any development on that property, they'd have to get uh an agreement with Troy in place. So that'd be similar in their case, although they're existing, there's already some there, so they probably just need to formalize something with the city of Troy.
Right. So again, you still need that formal, you still need to formalize an agreement with, is, is that a separate, is, is it a separate lead coming off of? Sanitary lead, or is it a shared sanitary lead coming off of?
It loo- it looks like they're, they have a separate one on here for uh stormwater.
Yeah, I, I think there needs to be specificity on that topic.
It, it needs to be shown on the site plan for sure, where it's coming from.
I mean, I, I think our responsibility in reviewing these site plans is to make sure we're not.
If, yeah, if you can pull up the site plan, there's. Yes, there's a, a manhole cover in their access point to uh the parking lot. And then on the north side of the property, there is the, another manhole, the trapped outlet, that then goes into Troy.
It's my understanding that the site plan has what it needs, it's just that. The engineers pointed out that we needed to get a letter from the city of Troy, confirming that the city of Troy is not requiring some kind of improvement that we have not. Done yet, so.
For stormwater, that's true.
Right, right, and then on the s- this, the separate point was the water. Going to the neighbor's property, we need a agreement showing that they're consenting to that, and so.
The sanitary line, yeah.
Correct, and so I just, part of what we, 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 we're seeking clarification on is. If a proj- if a private contract would suffice, just like a standard commercial contract between two landowners. Or is this something that needs to be a recorded easement?
I would say we can't really answer that, but I know that Nick um can help get the answers, because he'll be able to know exactly what they need, so. I would get with Nick after the meeting and he'll be able to help you.
Just for the record, I don't see a sanitary on the site plan, I see a storm, but I don't see, but I mean, that's, again, that has nothing, you know, just putting it out there.
The sanitary, I see, can I just call up real quick?
But yeah, absolutely.
So this is the city of Troy, this is, that's, that's a storm right there, that's storm, that's all storm, there's no, there's. Well, that's the water service, okay, so.
So that goes.
That is so strange, man, oh no, yeah, it is a shared system then, it is shared.
Yep.
But I, I think.
What page was that, Nick?
Sorry.
It's just on the, that would be page.
So it is a shared system though. Yeah, yeah. I mean, what, whatever, I mean, I just.
I, I think if, if there was a condition for that one, I think it could be along the lines of formalizing an agreement with advanced auto. City of Troy and conditioned on AEW accepting of what they're providing.
I think we have a lot of things that we're gonna.
I was just pointing on that specific one.
Thanks.
What's crystal clear to me now that, and thank you, Nick, is that the sanitary line is shared with advanced. And so if advanced doesn't maintain their sewer line, you have problems, and whose fault is it, who, who resolves this? And it, it becomes very messy, and as the chairman indicated, uh in our city, we have a funny way of charging for water. And it is largely dependent on the sewage, so that's sort of an interesting thing um as well, so. Uh I feel like that needs to be tidied up officially in, in, in some capacities, so that everyone is, is protected going forward. I think the intent and spirit of this process is to try to future-proof calamities from happening, and just make sure everything is clear upfront, and. Boy, that is a, it's an interesting thing to consider, like what will happen if you have a sewer backup or something like that, you know, in, in your property. Who's, who is, who is not responsible, I guess, is the immediate question, so.
And you have access to all of it, right?
And similarly, on, on the storm line.
I believe there's cleanouts, uh the cleanout, um right, because we, we saw it on the advanced parking lot. They showed us where it was at.
Yeah.
So they have a cleanout there for that.
Yeah, so, so.
But I mean, I've talked to them and, and he said he doesn't have a problem signing off on anything.
Yeah.
That's, no, yeah, that's what we're looking for, I mean, that's exactly what we want.
What exactly you guys needed, so they could draft the paperwork to have them sign off on it.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, in total, I know we brought up a lot of points here, so I guess, wha- what we're seeking. Is to have a conditional approval of the site pan- plan pending submission of the. Like enumerated list of outstanding items to be submitted to Nick for administrative approval, um this is, you know, this is just.
I, I guess I'm not prepared to make that motion personally, I don't know if the other commissioners are, but I, I think that. Uh there's, there's some very specific points that need to be addressed, and the site plan, you know. This process is usually a very clear support or reject based on the content of the application package. And this, this application package leaves a lot of um like un- unclarified issues. Uh so, you know, the, the parking thing alone is definitely gonna have to have some conversation about that, I, I, the way I read it. We have to have a variance for the thirteen versus fifteen spots, so the city attorney brought to our attention that this. We don't really have any basis for understanding like gross leased space, but we're treating it as normal space. But even if we treat it that way, and even if we had that definition, I still don't understand how we're, we're getting past the thirteen uh spaces. So um if, if, the, the, the list of things that we would have to be granting exceptions to that we're really not supposed to do in this forum. Is, is so long, I, I just don't know how we would do it here, um but the package can come back.
Yeah.
Sorry, what was that?
It's not retail, so the parking space are just for.
Right, I mean, the, the I one ordinance specifically states gross leasable area. And, and right now, the engineering, I guess, discovery, the, the review says. Gross is going off of the actual building area.
So are you arguing that each individual grower, you're calculating it by each grower and how much they're leasing from you?
Was your term.
I'm sorry.
That was me, because the ordinance is gross and your interpretation was areas just to be leased, right, that's how you got the square footage down to have the. Number of parking spaces.
Correct, we're just, we're just, we're just asking to, to go off of exactly what the ordinance says, and the issue is that. That term is not defined in the ordinance, but, you know, at the same time, we're hoping that it's, that. What we're judged on is based off what the ordinance says, not what is defined elsewhere in a separate section.
Well, the ordinance has lots of sections, but can you tell us how you got your calculation?
Yeah, you might wanna ask what's not being leased and why, and what's the portion that's being subtracted from the fifty-six sixty-one? Down to the four-five-zero-zero.
I just asked what, how you got, how you calculated, yeah.
The mezzanine pretty much, it's the, the upstairs was, was an addition by the old owner that added the mezzanine. So that's not in use.
So, but it's gonna be.
It adds square footage, but.
But I don't know if you necessarily could lease that out to somebody else.
You can't, no, I'm saying, it's, it adds square footage to the facility, but nonusable square footage.
Why?
Is it unfinished?
No, it's just, it's not gonna be used for part of the grow, because the grow is downstairs, the, the rooms are separated downstairs.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that someone might not be accessing it and storing, or it's, it's a finished space, right?
Do, do the tenants have access to it at all, as a common space, as a shared space, as any type of usable space?
I mean, it's a shared space, yeah, like the, the hallways and the bathrooms, that, those are all shared spaces as well.
So, so customarily, yeah, customarily, common space is usually considered, is calculated into lease space.
And also, I mean, it's not retail, so the most, you'll have six cars at the most.
But I understand that for sure, but we're, he's referencing the I one, so we're not talking retail, um. In, in your certain circumstance, and maybe in the future, we look at our caregiver ordinance for parking and have a special one. But um I don't see how we get to that calculation based on a room that nobody's using, essentially.
Or everyone's using.
Or everyone's, right, because we don't go in there and check and it, it just doesn't.
Are the bathrooms upstairs?
Uh there's an upstairs bathroom and a downstairs, it's more of a, I mean. Yeah, it's an open area, um like a, you can lounge there if you want to.
It's, so it's a usable space though, in, in um, just know that we're not trying to be picky or. Brownie-ching here, but like what we do with one person is how we have to approach things with everybody, it seems very meticulous, but we can't necessarily. Grant a special type of calculation because nobody's going in there, there might be a storage unit, back room in. A hundred of these different businesses on Main Street, but they've got a certain calculation that they abide by and. And we're not there checking if they're using that closet, right, so um it's just, in my opinion, not something we can go by.
So my question is, how would we develop more parking spaces if need be?
But if you have a variance.
You can, you can ask.
Facility only holds so many.
Well, and you, that's part of what you do with the variance, is you go see the ZBA, and they have a certain criteria, um I'm sure. You guys can discuss the criteria and your needs and whether or not that lot can accompan- you know, that's not our forte, but. Um you'll be able to explore it, there are other ways, right?
I think it's a good use of the variance process, I, I, I think that's, it's a well, well-disciplined routine, so. I don't think it would demote to you changing the parking, I think it would just be a variance for the situation with your, with that space perhaps, but. Yeah, as Commissioner Redmond said, it's not really at our disposal to just say it doesn't apply to you.
Technically, we don't need more than six spaces, but.
Probably, yeah.
Right, and we would, yeah, in this, especially if you, you know, you've read our ordinance, there's not gonna be people coming in and out. It's simply six caregivers, so I would encourage lowering the parking there in that case, right? We only want six people there, so um maybe that's something, you know. I do have um a few kind of questions, uh we did, in our ordinance, it does ask for the um. I know we talked about lighting plans, landscaping plans, uh we, we do require like an air, air quality plan. This is like our first run at caregiver, I'll say that now, so like we're kind of learning at the same time, so. The more information you can give us about those air quality um utilities and, uh you know, the only source that. We necessarily look at is, you know, the Michigan State website and, what is it, Eagle, and things like that, right? So the more you can give us in that regard, the better, um you know, well-formed the plan as I suppose, so. I'm sure you're taking notes about like things to come back with.
Yeah, we'll come back with the technical specifications of the air purifying systems.
Yeah, like um.
It's not a problem.
You know, there are, you probably know better than me, there's stuff on Eagle and the Michigan website, and they have specific ones that they um recommend, but those aren't. We just have to feel comfortable, we don't have a specific one we require, but yeah, we do have to look it over. And uh I was curi- are you guys um doing any, anything besides? There's nothing like butane or anything like those things being kept there or utilized for any extract? I'm naive when it comes to this kind of stuff.
Well, what you, what you refer, what, what you are referring to is uh like a, a medical or adult-use marijuana processing facility, and that is not what this is. This is simply, like, the, the, the spirit of what this, why the primary or the, the caregiver. Uh license was created was for people to do in their homes, when it was created, and um. We're here today because it's oftentimes not safe for people to have two hundred and sixteen plants in their home or seventy-two, or however, depending on how many. You know, primary care, caregiver licenses they would have, so um there's no extraction, there's no um. Burning or chemical reactions of any kind, it is simply just the growing of plants under.
So you're not making brownies or anything fun like that, or either? I don't know.
Yeah.
So uh and again, cause we're, we're new at this, I'm sure that the fire department looks for fire suppression. Stuff up above, is that something that you guys already have going on there? Um maybe that's a question for Nick that I can talk about, you know, like the sprinklers that come on if anything's going on. Sorry. I think that's all my questions. Somebody else has questions, you can go ahead, I might.
So it sounded like you had ten, about ten points to get back with us on, right, as you went through that list?
Um I'm hoping it's closer to six or seven.
Well, we do in the, the Troy sewer, right, and I counted ten. But you answered some too, like the dumpster being unlocked versus the enclosure, et cetera.
Well, I will, thanks for bringing that up, sorry, but um to me, that's not a dumpster enclosure, so if you do come back and that's your dumpster enclosure. My personal, I don't speak for the whole commission, I would want more, the, the dumpster enclosure to me is um. You know, y- you have a really defined space that you're keeping that dumpster, and it's not necess- yes, it's for aesthetics, but it's also for, we have. Rodents sometimes that might make their way, there's lots of reasons why the dumpster enclosure is a thing, so for me at least. I would wanna see a more defined dumpster enclosure, I know your dumpsters are locked, um but something. Defined, you know, there, so, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that was a.
All right.
And, and naturally, the fire marshal negotiations with the, uh the, with the, the access, right, because typically we don't approve without a fire marshal approval.
Yeah, that's gonna be one, one of the few problems here, uh. The uh, the fence and the fifteen-foot width that they're looking for, it, it sounds like they're requiring fifteen foot, and they're not sure how you're gonna get that. So you're gonna have to give us more details on how, how that's gonna be cured, if you're gonna move the gate, what you have to do to the gate to improve that. Further on, they mentioned uh, there's a wall, I was at the site before, and there's a wall that's crumbling next to you, is that your wall or is that?
It's not, it's not, it's, that's the adjacent property owner's wall.
It looked kinda scary to me, so I don't know if you can, I don't know if the city can have somebody look at that, it, it looks like it's probably ready to cave at any time, so.
Yeah, that, that, that wall is, is on the adjacent property owners, but um, you know, we've already taken um. Steps to, to paint, pa- paint and.
The wall from front to back to make it look better, and we planted the, you know, the ar- arbividees there to. Eventually they'll grow and cover that whole area, you won't see the wall anymore.
It just looks, it just looks dangerous to me, the.
Well, that wall you're talking about, I think it's like a s- four-foot wall, four-foot high wall or six-foot?
Blocks and there's.
But the blocks.
Must be dirt or something.
Yeah, I mentioned it to the landscape company, and they're very wide, so it's hardly that they will fall over, but I mentioned to him if he could maybe push them back some with the machinery that they have.
Yeah.
And, um, he said that they would, once they, uh, the dirt settled down, you know, they took some of the dirt, and they would do that, but.
We're trying to balance, um, you know, doing the, um, aesthetic, uh, things that we can just do with their approval, and having them do the capital improvements that would affect our site, but at, at the end of the day, it is their wall. It, it's kind of a tough balance there.
So on the corner.
High wall is their wall, technically.
Right, even the, the black one here that you're talking, oops, I just lost it, but like, it, it looks like there's a wall in front of that wall even.
That's even, that's their wall.
That's their wall as well, okay.
But that's the wall we painted, we cleaned and painted.
Okay. Yeah, because that kind of does go into health of it, that's kind of a safety thing if that thing's crumbling, but, um, we'll figure that portion out and how we go about that. But though, it did remind me, there was a mention of sealing and, um, much like the animal hospital, um, seal coat, the parking lot, there's some repairs needed there.
It's, it's, it's underway.
Okay, cool. Um, I just wanted to kind of make sure we give you a full list of the things that we were looking for. Obviously, you can go back to the meeting if you feel like you want a refresher, but Nick's always available as well, but.
I was just gonna mention, maybe with the motion to postpone, you can try list as many items as you guys talked about, just to make sure they're fully aware of what, what you're looking for when they come back.
And, and send you those notes?
It'll be part of the motion, so I'll be able to jot down what I can and come back and watch the meeting.
So I'm gonna do my secretary thing here.
I mean, I've tried to keep a list, but, um, you also did, so I don't know if you want to get a jumpstart?
I can try.
All right, I'll amend you.
You want to list?
E E W, yeah.
You could list, or you could just, just refer to AEW's, uh, four pages.
Yeah, because he went line by, line by line.
Just the, the highlighted points on that, suffice.
Before the motion is, is, is taken, can you, can we ask a quick question?
Sure.
If we were to go and do the full-on traditional dumpster enclosure directly outside of that dumpster, would it, would it, would it be of interest to the planning commission if we just removed the fence entirely, uh, from the, the drive to try to maximize that clearance? Would that be something that's viewed negatively by, by way of removing the fence?
I have to look back at where you're at. I'm not sure I know where.
From, from our perspective, like going into this, we were thinking that that fence would serve as an enclosure, but that's not going to.
Oh, you mean the fence with the fire department, that fence?
Correct.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if that was your perp-, that was the purpose, is that you were thinking it was acting as the enclosure for. Right, right, right.
Right.
Because in reality, it would be an enclosure for the dumpster and for people to come in there and dump, because we've had issues with people dumping furniture and all kind of stuff there, because nobody was there.
Right.
During the time, you know?
Hopefully that goes away now, right?
I think the fence and the gate would be more adequate than having the dumpster enclosure, because technically, we're gonna lock that gate, so no one will be able to get in there.
I totally understand that, and I agree with you. Hopefully with the lights and the, the people in and out and things like that, it's gonna, people aren't just gonna go there and do that. And you have cameras, so if you catch them, get their license, give them to the police.
We had an issue where somebody did go back there and steal a bunch of shelving, and, um, I submitted the cameras, the footage to the detective, master detective, and the license plate, the car and all that, and they, I guess, found out who it was.
Oh, good.
And taking care of it, so, yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Have the cameras for that reason.
That's, yeah, um, because I don't think it, um, necessarily serves the same purpose as a dumpster enclosure, at least from how our ordinance is written and from how most of our dumpster enclosures go. Does anybody, I mean, I would say.
It's not gonna be visible. The dumpster will not be visible, so.
To remove the fence, you don't, the, the fence isn't needed for a site plan approval. A dumpster enclosure is, I'm one person, I can't speak for the whole commission, uh, if you kind of want to get other inputs on it.
I mean, if, if the dumpster is not visible whatsoever from the road or from neighbors or whatnot, and it's totally concealed by the fence, I, I understand where you're coming from there. I mean, I, I think there's more benefit of having a lockable gate in this circumstance with the type of business and whatnot, so.
With the approval of the fire department, right?
With the approval of the fire department, of course. I mean, that's above and.
The priority is the fire.
Yeah. I mean, you, you're fighting for, you know, parking space as is, a dumpster enclosure is definitely gonna just make that situation worse.
Right, it's, it's, we're currently in the catch twenty-two of the fire department, and like with the fence currently, a- as we have it, our envision was having that be in part the dumpster enclosure, but if that is an issue with the fire marshal, then we would no longer have that enclosure, so we're just trying to balance.
Right.
Like how we're gonna proceed if, if, if there is a.
Well, I don't want you to go and take it parking spots for a dumpster enclosure either. I mean, I don't know. That's a hard conversation, um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from with, with, how you're treating this.
Yeah. So I don't know if that fully answers you, but if, if it means that you're gonna sacrifice parking spots, then I at least fully support you moving that fence to where the fire department feels safe, and then I'll feel good about it, right? I'll give you that.
Sure.
Sounds like we're kind of in consensus there.
Yeah, and I guess like the, if, if we could just have, I guess, a- as, as Nick mentioned in that motion, just as, it, those action items would be immensely helpful for us.
Sure.
Considering the, the length and depth of this site plan.
Sure, go ahead. Scott, Mr. Tinlin's gonna start us off.
So are we making, uh, making a motion just to table this until they return? Postpone?
Postpone.
I mean, correctly if I'm wrong, a lot of these things, a lot of these items are already stated.
In AEW report.
List.
Yeah.
So I mean, you know, they're already there, they just need to be, you know, executed.
Right, but for, for certain items, it's, it's tough for us to know whether it's going to continue to be an issue or not. For example, like, the windows were brought up in the report, but that, there's cinder blocks behind them, and it's.
Just label it in your site plan. So, yeah, I think Mr. Tinlin's going to give you a full.
Well, first, I gotta make the motion, right? So I motion to, uh, table the site plan application and postpone. I motion to postpone the site plan application for eight-sixty Batter Avenue until, um, the items on the AEW engineering report are clarified. These would be, uh, the parking area requ-, uh, parking, uh, spots required by our current ordinances, uh, having a Troy sewer agreement, uh, or private agreement, uh, to have a detailed landscaping plan, to, um, clarify, um, the lightings, or, uh, provide a, uh, photo, uh, metric, uh, plan required by the city, clear explanation, the windows, windows are cinder blocked and, uh, blackened out, uh, have the carbon filtration capability for odor pre-, prevention, uh, detailed, uh, provide the actual copies of the caregiver's, uh, state license cards, have approval of the fire department, uh, fire marshal, uh, for access with, and to, uh, provide, uh, dumpster enclosures, uh, that are compliant to our requirements.
Can I add to that?
Um, I, I will, um, yes, I will, I will second that.
Okay.
So that we can amend now.
Okay. Well, I was just going to add the sanitary line, um, agreement clarification. Did you?
Yeah, I said, I said the Troy, um.
Part of the.
Part of it, yeah, so we can, you can clarify that. So I did talk about the Troy sewer agreement.
He did this all the AEW.
Okay.
And the AEW report in all items.
Okay, all right. Just then verbally, I'll just reiterate, there's, there's a sanitary line issue, and then there's a storm sewer issue, so.
I will amend your motion, uh, to include the landscaping plan, um, and, uh, you did touch on the odor control, but we have specific criteria, just FYI, for your information about the, um, an air quality plan. And, um, make sure that the rooms are labeled, and, uh, it's locked, and those things are detailed in your site plan, because that's what we reference when we go to look at things, right? That's what we hold you to and you hold us to kind of thing, right? So if, um, somebody want to second my amendment to his motion, or do you accept it, or?
I'll second it.
He just has to accept it.
Yeah, I accept, yeah, accept amendments.
So we're all in agreement on this?
Just to confirm, I'm sorry, Mr. Tinlin, but you also mentioned specificity on the, on the parking issue, right?
Yep, because our, our current interpretation from grows versus areas to be leased, uh, is non-compliant.
Right.
And that we had recommended to go to, uh, the ZPA for consideration.
Okay.
If they can.
If they can do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Will you second it? Do you guys feel like you were given enough information? Nick will help supplement that if you need a.
Yeah.
You're good, okay.
We pretty much knew what else, you know, was missing, kind of.
No, we have it all organized for you in a little, yeah, little motion.
So, we need a vote?
Yep.
Okay, a motion and a support, uh, if we're done commenting, I'll take the roll call, please.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mr. Cussero?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
And Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Almost welcome to closing. We'll then move on to agenda item number twelve, which is a public hearing on the short-term rental zoning ordinance amendment.
Yes, it's getting close to ten, so I'll be very brief. Uh, what you have in front of you is exactly what we discussed last time and set the hearing on, so, um, if you have any questions, we can discuss them, but, um, there's really nothing, there's been no changes or anything. It's, it's exactly what we discussed last time.
I think I was happy with it last time, and we were just simply limited on time to have this public hearing. We had to have an announcement beforehand.
Yep.
And so, uh, I will now open it for public, if the public has anything to say about it. Seeing none, I will enclose the public hearing. And do we need a vote to send this on to mayor and council?
Yes, you would be recommending adoption to mayor and council.
I entertain a motion to effect.
I will make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment as presented and recommend it, to, uh, recommend adoption by the city council.
Support.
Motion, support, can I roll call, please?
Actually, could we discuss one thing before the vote?
Okay.
Just with the city attorney here, um, is there anything you would like to say about the language as currently presented? Obviously, you've had a great deal of input in it, but we're, we're lucky to have you here today, so I, I, I just.
Thank you, I review this, thank you, I, I'll take your motion, and we'll present it to council.
Very good.
And don't let him send it back to us. Okay, so, we need roll call, right, now?
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mr. Cussero?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Upstain.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, agenda number thirteen is consideration of appointing a representative from the planning commission to serve on the steering committee for the North Main Street Corridor Safety Improvement Project. Do we have any volunteers?
Well, can I just give a brief overview real quick?
What the job is?
Yeah.
We got five minutes.
Yeah, I know, I'll, I'll be quick. So it, it was in the packet, so I hope everyone had the chance to read it, but just for conversation's sake, in November two thousand twenty-four, the city applied for a grant through the Access Transit Program through Oakland County for a Main Street Road Diet Design Project for conceptual design titled North Main Street Corridor Safety Improvement Project. This will allow us to review North Main Street from fourteen mile to Elmwood and propose potential road design configurations. This program also will help fund public engagement efforts to receive more input, input from the community. Both the city master plan update and downtown master plan discuss exploring redesign efforts that would reconfigure North Main to one-traveling in each direction with additional on-street parking, which would potentially add fifty to eighty on-street parking spaces. Uh, this would also be a continuation of the traffic calming that occurred on South Main Street between two thousand eight and two thousand nineteen. The city is working with Giffords Webster on the project. A traffic volume study has been conducted, and a conceptual design is being developed. The next step we would like to do is establish a steering committee with relevant stakeholders in the community. We'd like the planning commission to appoint a member to serve on the committee. Once we have the members, a meeting will be scheduled during the last week of August to review the findings and discuss the next steps. There will likely be a second meeting scheduled after that in early September. Uh, and so the intent would be to schedule a pilot program this fall on North Main Street to see how that would look. So that's just a brief overview. The steering committee will be made up of, uh, ideally, a city council member, planning commission member, DDA representative, a business owner, and then support from, uh, Giffords Webster, myself, and Kristen Urbannick, our DDA liaison.
Did city council request this committee?
Uh, well, when we talked about it here, uh, it was something we wanted to do, and when this project first came to fruition, you know, one thing we're, we're really trying to do is not just the city do things, is to make sure we have public engagement involvement, and so this is one step to make sure, uh, representatives on our, on our boards and commissions, um, are involved.
It sounded like you'll be coming up with another survey or some type of feedback form for the citizens as well?
Yes.
That's the only reason I was gonna volunteer. I mean, and that, I'm always passionate about, you know, safety.
Any interest in it?
I'm, I'm happy to volunteer unless anybody else wants to.
I, I want to. I'm passionate, not so much about surveys, but, um, that's sorry, that didn't come out wrong.
Commissioner Harrow not a fan of public engagement.
We all have our qualities, that's cool.
I'm very passionate about that issue, you know, um, and I, I really, you know, maybe it can be done, and I hope it can be done right. I, I have a lot of fears about the backfiring of it, and I feel like this issue didn't grow organically out of citizens demanding it, or even city council members saying, you know, we really need to do something about this. I think this was a pet project of the city administration, and, um, I, I wasn't even aware we were applying for grants for this, um, you know, but it seems we have, and, and here we are. But it, it's a bold statement to say, we're already planning a pilot program, hope you like it. We're com-, we're, we're creating a list of people we're going to allow to vote on this, and you can be one of them.
Uh, they can't vote in committees, though.
I, I don't think that's exact.
I hope not.
Close to what we're doing.
I hope not.
So, I mean, you said it pretty confidently, though, so.
It wouldn't be a committee then.
What, what we're trying to do, and, and I'll first state that the grant was presented to city council to approve the funding for it, which, uh, we needed to fund twenty percent of that, which they approved. And so it's been, uh, talked about, as I said, since November twenty-twenty-four. On top of that, the DDA has discussed road diet, traffic calming on fourteen Main for a long time, and so this opportunity came up, and so this allows us to explore it. And, uh, yes, we are looking at doing a pilot program, and that is, that way we don't invest capital and infrastructure, just do it so we can get feedback on it. And so, we're, we're trying to go through the proper steps to make sure we do that.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like a compliment, yeah.
I, I like, I like the idea that you've brought in, engaged different stakeholders. I think it's great. I don't love the idea of it as well, but fair enough, I think that this is a great engagement, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm fine with supporting whoever wants it more.
Yeah, I, I, and my perspective has always been that we all have strong opinions, whether you're serving the city or you're just a citizen, and just based on what I do for a living, I like to see data. So this is a good first step, because as you mentioned, it's in the master plan for the downtown, it's in part of ours, and I think it's just really important that we start to have data so we can make an informed decision.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you guys coming up with the idea to at least start that process, but I don't want to.
I thought you were gonna fight for your spot there.
Or you can have two representatives.
I was gonna say, yeah.
We are trying to keep it tight and have one from each, each board.
Can you have a primary and an alternate?
That was not something we discussed, but.
Is this a planning commission committee, or is this a?
It's a steering committee of stakeholders just from the city.
Well, how about we do this? How about we say strongly, we would love it if your policy of one person only could be expanded to two, and see what happens.
Well, and I'm wondering where the policy is for the steering committee ordinance. I don't know.
There, there's not. It's something we came up with for this specific project.
I think it'll be okay with both of us. I, I, I love your, I love the idea of you, you know, bringing legitimate survey experience. Plus, I think you were very involved with the master plan stuff and the sustainability plan, so I, I think it, it would be great. What do you say?
We're looking for one.
No, hard pass, absolutely not.
We're looking for one person from each board of commission.
Can I make a motion that we extend it to a ten-fifteen tonight, to, is everybody in agreement for that, so?
Yes.
We won't need that long, but.
Support.
Needs a.
Sure.
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll just do all in favor for the extension?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. And then, do you want us to vote on, uh?
Can, can we just vote, yea or nay for each candidate, and whoever has the majority gets the one position?
I mean, I would, gosh, guys. I mean, I would, gosh, guys.
What if the people that aren't here tonight want the position?
Oh, well, you snooze, you lose. We don't have people, they're not assigned. Oh, well.
They'll want this missing, right?
It's, we can't, but I would like to get a little bit more from our candidates, maybe, I guess. I mean, Josh, do you feel like it's something you, I know you were on the sustainability committee. In, I'm, I hope that this committee, by the way, is televised or something, because I miss so much of sustainability committee because your meetings were also Zoom. It was COVID. But is there anything else you want to, like?
No, I mean, I, you know, I take the perspective too that, you know, I do market research, so I'm very involved in that. And I just, that's where I think I helped in the master plan process, was I was sending as much feedback as possible to get some Webster over here. And I don't really have much else to add. I mean, I am an advocate for finding out what works because I have issues with the amount of traffic and how it flies through the neighborhood, just because I'm in the northeast corner of the city. And I'm also off of Lincoln, so I also don't want to drive traffic to a main thoroughfare way. And so I'm kind of interested to see the perspective of what the city's come up with, but as well as the other people on the board. And Nate, if you have a different perspective, then that's why I don't mind having two people, but we need to decide on one. But that's kind of what I bring is my market research experience, and I do have interest in it.
Well, let's, you know, I, I'll say, before I advocate for myself, I'll just say, I don't accept that this has to be made tonight. I think we should, we should maybe table that conversation, and I'd like to get some feedback from other folks about, you know, who gets to decide what other individuals are tapped, you know? What other is a DDA clearly, you know? Should Parks and Rec be involved? I don't know. Sometimes, sometimes people are excluded by design on accident and other times on accident, so.
We're asking of one representative from each board, so for a few different reasons. If we had more than, if three council members wanted to do it, that could potentially be a quorum. And so we wanted one member from each board to represent and provide feedback, provide updates at future meetings, et cetera.
Yeah, I get that you can't have a quorum. That makes perfect sense, but it also doesn't justify why you got to only have one. But I agree, there's other people that might be interested. You know, Laurent's not here. He might have a say in that, I don't know. But I, I'm very passionate about this because there is a very, very strong possibility that the momentum that you have demonstrated, you want it. You want it already done. You want it, you, the administration, wanted it done two years ago.
We want the feedback to see if it's a potential option.
Like, yeah, you have to say that, but it's been very clear that the administration wants this done. And it has gone and it is seated in multiple fronts, that we have to do this and we want it done. I've heard everyone say that from the administration. They just haven't said why. They haven't said why the residents are demanding it. No resident has come up and said they're demanding it. Residents have come up and said they're concerned about traffic going onto Lincoln and all the other side streets.
You're supposed to be selling yourself.
I can tell you why I think it's beneficial. I can't tell you why we should do it because we haven't gotten the data back. I can tell you why I think we should do it because we have K through 12 right there, crossing five lanes of traffic, which is dangerous for them, especially when folks are driving above the speed limit. My window is there every time. I hear vehicles flying through the light. I've, myself, almost went hit crossing the street. So we have a pedestrian issue there. We have a severe parking problem continuing to come up in downtown as we continue growing and having new developments. If you go there on a Saturday, there's a few parking spaces. And so what we're trying to do is flow traffic out, have more parking to support our businesses. Because that is a main concern we get from almost every single business owner in downtown, is there's not enough parking. So yes, based on those two things, I think it could benefit the city. Yes, but that's why we're here. That's why we're here, asking for people to volunteer to be on the board and the committee, so.
I would like to be on the board. I would like to hold the city to account to very, very high-quality data to drive those decisions. And, you know, I'll tell you right now, if you're, if you're talking about speeders, the solution is to enforce the laws, not to constrain the road. And I agree with parking. It is a requirement. We need to have parking. But, you know, now you say we need parking, but when we were, you know, dealing with other sites, you know, there was a great deal of leniency treated to our parking standards.
Hey, Nate, I would say that we're kind of going far here. Sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, but I think that if you guys feel like you want feedback, maybe even want to get some time to see if Laurent is interested, I'd be okay with a motion to postpone.
To next meeting?
When are you looking to fill this position?
Is it the first meeting?
I was hoping to by 10:00 PM tonight.
When's the first meeting?
Well, that didn't happen.
Well, the meeting was going to be scheduled once we had the members of the committee to find schedules that work for everyone.
How many others have been named?
This is the first time we've brought up to one of the boards, just to do the schedule.
I feel like we do have a little time, right? We can at least postpone it to our next meeting.
So we can talk to one other commissioner, but also my opinion, I want somebody that's going to be unbiased, not going in with all these preconceived notions too. So be real clear when we vote for this, that's the candidate I want in. I think Mr. Solomon's demonstrated a lot more, just on the conversation we had. So we can postpone it, but I would also vote right now.
Well, it doesn't mean he doesn't have an opinion when he's reserved it.
When you publicly state stuff, then that's your opinion to the public, right? So we can postpone it, but, you know, that's what, you know, my viewpoints on that are.
So I'll make a motion to postpone the appointment from a representative from planning to the steering committee. Any support?
Support. Can I make amended that we reach out to Laurent by city email to see if he has interest in it, just to speed it up?
Sure.
I'll reach out to him and I'll copy the chair on the email.
Yeah, okay. Need to roll on it?
Yeah.
Sure, let's do that.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Harrah?
Yes.
And Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 14 is a planner's report. We don't have a planner's report, okay. How about staff report and training opportunities? What's in the packet is what it is.
Yes, I got about 20 minutes for you guys.
Cool.
No, the packet was included in the report. The one thing I didn't include in here that I want to share is we did hire a full-time code enforcement officer who started two, three weeks ago, I believe, and he's been a really great addition so far. Excited to get him more acclimated in the community and making sure we're enforcing our local codes.
I texted him this morning and invited him to come tonight, but he said he would, but it's his mother's birthday, so he'll, well, I'll give him a rain check while you have him come in.
Yeah. Chuck Ceramics, he's been a really good addition to the team, so he's from the city of Fraser. So he knows what he's doing and, you know, already out there.
It'd be good for us to put a face to the name.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, so that's the main item I wanted to note, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Does full-time extend into Friday or is that, is that city hours?
So currently, it's full-time Monday through Thursday, 36 hours a week. Now, we have talked about flexing some time so we can come in on Fridays or even Saturdays to make sure that over the weekend, things stay in compliance. But we first wanted to get him used to being in Claussen and knowing the community before that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question based, wait, is that the right time? I'm sorry, I'm like brain dead at this point. Are we able to ask you questions on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you, can you give us an update on Burger King? Because I know that, I know that it's this year that you went over engineering and stuff like that with them, but I don't know how recent that was. And it's, I feel like we're almost coming up on a year that we, I don't know how long ago it was, we approved-
Yes.
A bended site plan.
So they have approved engineering plans. We've had a first pre-con meeting with them. They had, they were going back and forth with a contractor, trying to locate one to do the work. We had a follow-up meeting with them about two weeks ago, and we should be able to have another one very soon. So I think their goal this year is to do some site grading, maybe get the foundation poured, and then pick up where they left off.
Cool. You know, for everybody else, it seems like they're just not even going to do anything, right? So it's good to know they're still moving.
So we've been in constant communication with them. They've encountered a few issues on their end, but, you know, trying to make sure they're moving forward, but not being understanding.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
To that end, I also saw in that that the engineering plans from AEW for the Shum project are complete. Feedback has been provided to the developer?
So there, the, so that note was from their completed first review with comments. It goes back to them for, to address comments. And then AEW has approved their engineering plans. There's some open items from the county and state that haven't been done yet. Those timelines on Eagle can be up to three to six months. And so they are requesting to be on the next PC agenda for a conditional approval to do some site grading this, this fall. And so more information will be provided next week, but it will be on the next agenda.
Okay, so will that engineering review be in the packet for the next meeting? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? How about legal update?
Nothing.
Any further comments before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Support. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Harrah?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
And Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
It's been a while. Unfortunately, yes, we've been much later before.
Oh, man, you missed the good old days. We used to be 10:00 PM, it was early.
This was, this is reminiscent of the old days. Yeah, I'm done with traveling, I think, so that's, that's nice. Are you? It's kind of sucks because I'm always busiest, right in summer, when I-